Good morning, everybody. I call the September tenth meeting back into session after our recess overnight of the State Board. We are all in attendance. Yeah, there's Dennis, ready to go. So we do have a little bit of a shift this morning in timing. So we will be starting with Dr. Jake Steele and the AI presentation. We will run in then into computer science education in Kansas, and then we'll go back to number one. We just had a little bit of a mishap, so all good, just going to be a little out of order, no worries. Okay, so if Mr. Jake, Dr. Jake Steele, are you ready to go, sir? Sorry, we kind of jumped the line on you.
No, I'm great.
Thank you.
So if you remember, we're kind of in the screen time task force area. We're going to be looking at how screen times are used in school. That's separate from today. We're also looking at artificial intelligence. Rather than just going straight into a task force itself, I beg the commissioner to allow us to do a few learning sessions and just some series around what is AI and some of these things. Try to become consumers, maybe you all use it every day in your lives, and if not, we'll step into some of those things. My purpose today would be to talk just a little bit about artificial intelligence. But I think if we, if I land my mark, it's just giving us a few principles that will help us better navigate artificial intelligence in our lives. A couple of things that I want to say on the front end would be artificial intelligence is, is a domain of learning, no different than like physics, right? So physics has its own classification, and so would artificial intelligence. It's actually been around for quite a long time. Well, I would say a long time, nineteen fifty's, sorry if that was not long enough, and has really moved in. We've had some pretty big marks that have changed some things. Twenty twelve was a big marker, and then twenty twenty-two was a big marker. Some experts would say that when it comes to artificial intelligence, the last ten years was a lot about research and connecting. The next ten years is about application. So yes, it will fill much more into our lives in part because now they're in that, how is this integrating in our, in our life space? So I'm going to build this spectrum or continuum, and I wish I would have potentially just made it a bell curve. So I'm going to ask rhetorically, where are you on this spectrum? And I would say, if you look at a normal bell curve, we have outliers generally on both ends, and I mean it totally respectfully, but I have learned when it comes to government and other entities, often we hear from the outliers because that's what brings the passion to our doorsteps. We rarely hear enough from the like middle users. So if we are doing a learning session, I'm asking you to rent an idea. And so you're not buying, you're just simply renting, and I want you to rent a different place on the spectrum than you naturally show up. So if you are the all-in evangelist, I'm going to ask you to take a deep breath and step back for a minute and maybe put the hat of the doomsdayer on, or maybe just one spot on the spectrum and vice versa. But I just think it'll be helpful in our little learning category. Let's talk about technological advancements. One of the things I've learned with talking about artificial intelligence is everyone has an opinion, and you're always wrong, it feels like. And so I have seen analogies like this used, and I've seen people troll people for using analogies like this, so I'm prepared to be trolled. What we've seen in the world is with every technological advancement, we will see creation and we will also see destruction, and ultimately, we can just call that disruption, right? I'm going to slaughter this, but Plato is talking about an Egyptian myth where King Theus warns that writing, writing, okay, would quote, "produce forgetfulness in the soul and give the appearance of wisdom, but nothing on the inside." Right? So there was a caution of like, maybe we shouldn't let people write. Now, was he fully wrong? Well, I can tell you right now, I can remember if I'm in a bind and my phone dies, I can call my wife. That's it. Like literally, that's the only, right? I don't write things down anymore. So there is truth in all of these, there is real disruption with this, there is always a cost. And I want that to be, we need to own that, and we need to talk about what is that cost and who and how are we, are we going to talk about that? So I'm going to give us some four principles. This is going to click off the four, the four principles, which is Stephen Arkovy would say, or Jay Scott, he's the one that actually got me connected to this, the main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing. I think for the State Board of Education, if I'm leading a learning series, I would see what is the main thing. And I would say our vision is to lead the world in the success of each student. If that is our vision, our mission would define success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. If you can prioritize the primary questions, which I would say is this, then the secondary questions can often take care of themselves. But if we cannot anchor to the primary question, which is this, then those secondary questions will overwhelm us. So if we engage with artificial intelligence, it is because we need it to do something for us. And what is that thing we need it to do? We need it to assist us in the success of each student in Kansas. And if it cannot, we have no time for it. So the first principle is, I'm just gonna, I know I shrunk it down, it's a little unfair, I'm just gonna call it instruction first. Kansas keeps rigorous academic instruction at the main thing. Our time, talents, and resources prioritize high-quality, standards-aligned teaching for each student's success. And if it can't do that, then why are we talking about it? The next principle, I'll let you into the Steele family life a little bit, is use purpose-built tools for the job. So I'm a father of some rebunkishous boys and a beautiful little girl. And I am trying to teach them to be men, and I want them to have integrity and a value to society. And so we spend a lot of time in our house talking about tools and using tools. I have a five-year-old, his name is Wells. Wells can use the hammer anytime he wants, as long as it's not inside, in the garage, or on living things. That's his parameters. And then it's fair game, and I want him to test and try and figure out, do I want to use the pry bar today or the sledge, how that goes? We also have an axe at the house. You can imagine that as a different tool which Wells wants to use, and actually, there's some debate here. Let's not bring my wife into this, but I let him use it. But there are different parameters. We've created a blood circle, right? That's a term that scouts use. And it's like, you will use shoes, you will have eye protection, and no one will be in this area while you use it, and you have access to this axe. He also wants to use the chop saw. Wells does not use the chop saw. My wife and I agree on this. There will be a day that's appropriate, it is not now. I bring up the silly analogy to remind us that not all tools are created the same. So when we think about AI, we cannot allow ourselves to use this big common AI bubble. We have to ask, what tool are we using and for what job? I will show you a tool today that I think is safe to use and the way that we're using it. I hope you can agree because you are kind of a passive participant here. And so when we build these tools, we have to be very specific about what are we asking it to do? Who are we doing it with, and how do we bring on those tools? I will also say with this principle, there is an immense amount of research on the pedagogy of how people learn. If you can take the science of learning with what artificial intelligence can do, I think we can make some really good progress. But if we use, not to pick on it, but a chat GPT to literally do everything, we will probably find ourselves in a worse off position. We should not activate that tool to grade and to do all of these things. But if we have purpose-built tools, I think we can go a long way. Number three, the framework matters. Now, I'm not going to go too far back in time here, but I would say, I was a one, about a decade ago, I was teaching mathematics in middle school and high school, and I was a one-to-one teacher. We made a ton of mistakes. And I think one of the biggest mistakes we did is it was kind of this laissez-faire approach of like, we were more concerned about getting devices in than how the devices were being used. And so to give an example of that, I actually used to lead the Office of Educational Technology at the U.S. Department of Education. So you have a staff that you would think are like these tech bros. And it's interesting, we would always have people come to us and they'd be like, oh, I'm all in on tech. And I was so impressed with the staff that would be like, why? Or they'd say, hey, I'm going to do these devices, and they would always be like, but why? Because they were always going back to this, like, why are you doing this? If it's only for tech's sake, we're, we're off on the wrong foot. But if you are trying to create a core, a tier-two instruction to supplement the core, now we're having a conversation, right? Now we can start talking about how is this tool going to be implemented? We'll spend a lot of time in this area. There are frameworks people have already developed for State Boards of Education to say, this is the framework we would suggest you do. I'm not going to tell us to adopt it, but I want to look at those frameworks both internationally and nationally and say, here are what people are offering, do you think that's appropriate for your role and what you do? The fourth principle now is really going to get into this AI space, which is, if I can take some of the, the, the fear out of AI at its core, it is a pattern recognition system. So let's talk about this. I'm going to do an activity, you can say it out loud if you want, and I'm going to oversimplify it. Let me just be clear for all my IT friends, and it's just, it's wildly oversimplified. It is raining outside, so I grabbed my, okay, so everyone was like, umbrella, why did you say that? Because there's this pattern here that says umbrella, well, you know, that's not actually the only answer. So I could say, give me another answer. It's raining outside, so I grabbed my, great, I'd started, so the majority said raincoat, but I started hearing different things. If you're in southwest Kansas, you would have never said umbrella because it's always windy. Like, that didn't even exist to me until I moved out of the state. But so what you're doing here is it's, it is a pattern recognition system. It has used immense amount of data to start to interpret what is probably the next word. Now, what seems scary to us, but it is still a pattern? Then they start to say, but I actually probably can tell you your next sentence. And then I can probably tell you logically what is your next paragraph. And actually, I bet you I can tell you your next topic. And you've seen that in Google, when you looked up someone, and then you go into the search bar, and the next thing it asks for is either their net worth or their age. It's like, we know what you're, you're thinking, right? Now, we don't always love that, but I'm just trying to remind you that this is a pattern recognition system, and the way it's deployed is to look for patterns. And then eventually, we'll get to the point where it's trying to create new patterns that have never been seen before. So from all of this, I'm going to try to tell you what the future will be by, again, looking at past data. So here are our four principles. Instruction first, that'll help clean up a lot of noise. Purpose-built tools will help us serve students the best. The framework matters, how we bring it on or allow it to be into our schools will make a big difference to if this is successful or not. And then AI at its core is a pattern recognition system, and we can understand these things. We are in the driver's seat, and we can choose or not to choose to dis, to engage with this kind of stuff. Future topics on this is going to be what is artificial intelligence? Let's talk about public perception. Turns out, it is changing constantly. It's amazing, like, per month, you're like, everyone's in, and then a month later, like, everyone's out. I'm not trying to say, let's go with that, but I just think it's good to know what is out there, how are people feeling about this? We'll look at research and reports. You can imagine some early adopters wanted to be the first on the ground to say, this is how to do it. That is an approach. There are some reports out there, I think some of you have seen and share of what is the impact on the mind and what are some of those things? And are we worried about that? And of course, we're always worried about anything that is interacting with our students. And then, of course, frameworks for responsible adoption. All right, so I'm going to try something, and it can totally fail. I'm okay with failure here, so accept this with me if you will. I am going to co-learn with a chatbot in your presence. Just, I don't know if you've ever, I don't know how you've used these in your life, but I want you to see this in action. This is not an endorsement of the tool. This is not me telling you you should do it in the classroom. Let's clean all of those up. But before I go here, let me say a couple of things. I pay for the, I pay for this version because I want to control my data. There is a common understanding that if you're using free stuff, someone's getting something from you. Now, I actually do believe in the laws of the land and believe in the contracts that are set up here. And if they breach this contract, I anticipate I have the right to go before them in the court of law and handle these things. So the first thing I did for your awareness, and we will talk about this when we get into some things. So this chatbot connects to this mainframe, I'm sure I'm going to screw it up through these APIs. So there's this thing called a memory. It is learning how to speak to me. It knows how I like to be talked to. And so I actually am going to leave the access here. I'm going to say, you can refer to my old chats, and you can refer to some of the ways I prompt you so that you can get to know the kind of questions I'm asking. I'm okay with this. The next thing, what I did on this bot here, if you can look, it is faded, but it actually says, improve the model for everyone, and I have turned that off. That's code for share my data. Admittedly, I don't put a lot of things in there that I'm concerned about, I don't put in personal data, so, but I just, I've decided for now, I just, I'm not comfortable with it, so they can learn from someone else. This next step says, improve, oh, so there's the improve the model for everyone, and then I just wanted to double down on this. This says voice mode, it is turned off. I am going to engage with it, and it's going to say, hey, can we use your audio recording or your video recordings to improve our model? And I'm saying today, no, you cannot, okay? So that's the privacy that we're looking at as I engage in this tool, let's see if it works. Professional singers don't always perform live for a reason, and I probably should have known that. Hey, can you hear me?
Are you loud and clear?
Great.
Let me know what you need.
Yep, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm going to be a little bit more blunt than I normally am with humans because the tool's great. Hey, so I'm going to ask you, tool, if you will go ahead and increase your speed by one point five, I need you to talk faster than you normally do. And then I'm going to ask you not to repeat everything I say, are you good with that?
Absolutely, I can do that. I'll speed things up to about one point five times the normal rate, and I'll skip repeating everything you say, just let me know what you need next.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, I'm here in front of the Board of Education, so I am going to ask you, you know, ultimately, they do hire me, so we need to be very complimentary in the way that we talk to them, do you understand that?
Got it, I'll keep it upbeat and complimentary for the board. Just let me know what you need me to dive into, and I'll jump right in.
Sorry, that's probably a bad joke, but, okay. So I want to talk to you about artificial intelligence. I don't know a ton about it, but I really want to better understand it. Can you help me understand what is artificial intelligence?
Absolutely, and I'll keep the pace up. So in a nutshell, artificial intelligence is basically a technology that allows machines to mimic human-like cognitive functions, things like learning from data, recognizing patterns, and making decisions. So it's basically teaching computers to do tasks that would normally require human intelligence, and that's really the core idea.
Okay, so if I called artificial intelligence a domain, are there sub-domains within artificial intelligence? Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you perfectly. Keep going and let me know what else you need.
All right, well, if you hear me perfectly, could you answer the question, which is, are there sub-domains to artificial intelligence?
Absolutely, and I'll keep it quick. So yes, AI definitely has sub-domains. You've got machine learning, which is all about algorithms learning from data. Within machine learning, there's deep learning, which uses neural networks. You also have natural language processing for language tasks and computer vision for interpreting images. So there are definitely a bunch of sub-domains under the AI umbrella.
Okay, so let's explore machine learning. This is, I just really want to understand this. I don't know much about machine learning, but I would like to, so I might need a few analogies on this. What is machine learning at its core for someone who doesn't know anything about it?
Right in, so, machine learning is basically a subset of AI where we train algorithms on data so they can learn patterns and make decisions without being explicitly programmed for every scenario. So instead of telling the computer exactly what to do, you feed it data and it figures out how to improve its performance over time, and that's really the core of it, teaching machines to learn from examples.
Okay, and what, what then is, what then is deep learning? Is it just learning deeper through the machine?
Pretty much, yeah. So deep learning is a kind of machine learning that uses neural networks with many layers, hence the deep. These layers help it learn really complex patterns from large amounts of data. So it's basically just a more advanced layered approach to machine learning that can handle things like recognizing objects in images or understanding speech.
So explain to me in one sentence each, what is AI, what is machine learning, what is deep learning, and what are buffalos?
Absolutely, I'll keep it snappy. AI is basically the broad field of making machines mimic human intelligence. Machine learning is a subset of AI focused on algorithms that learn from data. Deep learning is a further subset of machine learning using many-layered neural networks. And buffalos, well, they're just large shaggy animals that roam the plains.
All right, do they have anything to do with artificial intelligence?
Not really. Buffalos are just the fun random addition there. They have no connection to artificial intelligence, just a nice reminder that not everything has to be tech-related.
Thank you. Oh, shoot. The other thing I was going to do is I was going to ask it to create a transcript of what we did, and then on top of the transcript, turn it into a one-pager, because we don't have all time for that, and then highlight the main points, and it would have said, yep, and then it would have delivered to me. So that is one of the apps that is out there. That is called a, so chat GPT is a multimodal, which means it can do multiple things. Some tools are single-modal, which means it only does one thing. It does text to speech, it does text to text, it does text to pictures. This can do multiple of those. This was really just a party trick. You may have not liked it, that's okay. But I am trying to, while we do this, is to show you some of these things that are out there. Let's see if I can just tease up the next thing. Next week, I will, we will look at, or sorry, next month, we will look at an artificial intelligence tool that will take briefs and turn them into a podcast. It sounds like meh, but I'll admittedly, the commissioner sends me stuff, and every so often, I throw it into these, and on my run, I have a podcast. So look, next time, I'm going to send you a podcast, and I need you to know, it literally is just me putting two documents into this generator, and then it creates dialogue. And that is a way to learn. It is not the way to learn, and I don't even know if I want my kids to learn that way. Are you with me? I am not trying to sell this as an idea, just, we're going to explore some of the spaces and things that are out there. So happy to take questions, happy to take criticisms, would love to write down some things you want to see or don't want to see again, but just kind of dipping our toe into artificial intelligence and to learn about it. I actually programmed, I, I listen to females better than men.
Betty. Thank you. Quick question, because, and, and really, you did a very, very nice job of making it less intimidating. The, the big thing that kind of circles my mind, and I'm going to see if I can frame this question where it makes sense. When things are being used as they were intended, just like your example with the, the tools, there's a certain comfort level, and so we're going to have the, the good guy, bad guy. Bad guy gets in control of those tools and, and wreaks havoc or destruction. This is probably one of the major concerns I sense with a lot of people when we talk about AI. It isn't so much AI, but what people will in turn use that for. Perfect example, some insurance companies are using AI to determine if we're going to approve this treatment versus denying it. And then everything has to fit neatly, which life doesn't always fit neatly. So the concern is, how do you separate this so that there's, there's some kind of safety valve of who's actually in charge of, of, of how this, this works? What kind of boundaries, what kind of guardrails can be there to make sure that the tools are being used as they should be properly? And if the public is relatively naive with this, how do you bring this all together so that AI is not as intimidating? That's a lot that I, I packed in there and dissect in any way that you want.
I, I would just say, you know, when I was a teacher doing some one-to-one stuff, we kind of had the Wild West. As a teacher, you could download any app and try it with students. I don't know if I would recommend that ever again. There needs to be a framework on how things are brought on, and then we need to understand it. And I think the more students understand, I think of, my, my, we had a kind of scary event this summer. I had a boy who had a, you know, in a pool, he got close to what he thought was drowning. It was uncomfortable for all of us, and he got really scared of the water. And I think the best thing I can do for him right now is to teach him everything he knows. Everything, then he knows how to swim, and then hopefully, he will know when he sees the ocean and other things, when can I use it and when I can't. So I do think knowledge is power in this space, and I think the more our teachers know, our principals and superintendents know about this, we can stand ready to say, sorry, this is used the wrong way, let's not do it. The less we know, and I think, my concern is if we borrow it off now and just say, all is bad, then I think we'd start dipping our toes into water that's unsafe. So we need to figure out what's safe and what's not safe and teach people to swim, if that analogy works. Thank you.
Debbie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm probably in the pragmatic, right in the middle already, but I'm the person who would, you know, the Bible believer who probably thinks Antichrist is going to be full-on into this AI, and, but it, I'm pragmatic about it, you're not going to turn AI away, and it doesn't mean it can't be used for good. So, you know, that kind of thing. I missed Dr. New's study last night on Revelation, but what I wanted to ask is, I'm really excited. I'm excited to be learning this, I'm, I'm really enjoying your presentation, and I'm wondering, Dr. Watson, if you and Eric or Rayleigh could take this portion of the meeting and give it a separate video that is just its own, that I could share it out to my local board members, my constituents, because I think everybody would like to hear this without me saying, here's a seven-hour or five-hour, whatever, today, it ends up being long video, go to the one-hour, whatever, mark. Just being able to have this portion and be able to share it out, because, thank you for putting this on, because I am really enjoying this.
I appreciate that. Melanie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Steele, great presentation. I really like how you laid all of that out. There are so many things I want to ask you about, but I know that we're going to get to keep seeing you. Can you talk a little bit about the agreeability factor that comes in with AI? I mean, it, it seems to no one love you, you know, when you hear it speaking, and it also has a tendency to agree, does it not?
So I have, I, I don't have a deep knowledge here, but I have watched some experts present on this. Again, can I do the caveat is, I don't know how I feel about this when it comes to students, so I'll only speak adult to adult for a minute. I used to say, I was really frustrated, I really don't like when AI says like, oh, good job, or like, that's a good, I don't, I don't appreciate praise in general, and definitely not something that's fake, I don't think that's healthy. And some of the experts who are creating this said, we were surprised by how many users said they'd never been complimented before.
Oh.
Now, that's, again, we're going to, we could easily tear into the wrong space there. I don't think we should get our social-emotional connections with things that don't have social-emotional connections. So I'm not there, but that was a reminder to me that maybe we could be more kind in the way that we interact in the world and do good. They are working on that agreeability, there's been some papers written about what does that mean? The problem is, it's that idea of self, there's a lot of problems, let's not make one, there's a lot of problems there. One of them is self-think. It'll affirm, you'll say, hey, I want to do a, you know, presentation on this, and some of those models are saying, that's a great idea, and it's not a great idea. So part of that would be, it's called prompt engineering, I'm sure you all know more about it than I do, but if we can teach people how to do prompts, it helps get better answers. So maybe you're asking, hey, this is my view, can you give me an alternative view? Can you show me the other side to this? Because nothing is so thin that there's not two sides, right? So you can prompt engineer a way out of that confirmation bias. Again, a tool that could be used if we teach people how to do it.
May I follow up? Thank you for that, because you, you led right into my second question, which was, how do you get another perspective when it, when it's agreeing with you? As a student, you ask a question, it's going to deeply validate whatever it is you're asking about and not offer an option. So thank you for that. I look forward to our future conversations.
Likewise, me too.
Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, this has been wonderful. Did a little, little exercise with our college son about asking one question, and we kept the question the same. We didn't add any, any additives to it or anything, just the exact same question to three different AI sources where, that could give you the feedback. And it was so interesting, certain ones wanted more information to get, and the other one just gave us one. And it was so interesting, certain ones wanted more information to get, and the other just gave us what it was. And what's interesting about it is, it was something that we know factually, because it was about me, right? It was about, so he's reading this to me, and some of the things were right. Some of them are not quite right, but, and so it depended on which one you went to to get the answers. So what we were telling him, it was a little exercise, is don't just go to the first source. And then you also, what's out there may not be true. And that's just, the untruth piece is just going around. And it was an actual, I mean, it was something that you could look, if you did, if you were to do a deeper dive, you'd find out exactly, oh, yeah, that's not enough information, or they need more information on that, because that's not, that's not the full information that you should have on that. So what I was trying to say to him is, do your deeper dive. Do, don't just rely on the first source. You know, go down deep. And because the information that's out there, the only person that knows the truth about that, or knows the actual facts, unless you go dive deep, is the person that it's about, input that information or gave somebody that information. So it's so interesting, just the three different, just going to three different sources with the same exact question and all the different, all the different resources or information you got from that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Michelle. I actually wonder if this will help our students, how fast we start to realize, that's not fully accurate. We may actually have better consumers of information. We could, if we design it right, right? Because we'll start to know, I cannot trust it. Let me check again and again and again. And we start to triangulate data and say, I have four different sources that are coming to say, this is wrong or right or something. And so there is a world in which students can be taught to do exactly what you taught your son, which is, let's be critical consumers of information. And I think that's very helpful. I also love in your example that you sat down with your child. That matters, right? Versus like, hey, I just gave him the keys and said, good luck on the lawnmower, and see how this ends. Watch out for the hill. Sorry, you didn't need that.
Well, you go sideways down that, that's going to happen.
We were going through some lawnmower training at my house, and we have some debates there on the hill.
Betty, did you have another comment?
I do, just kind of a quick follow-up question, because I have really been in a lot of conversations with schools that are looking at bringing the AI aspect into. From an observation standpoint, and for me, I was really having a hard time processing this. In the sense that AI observing a classroom can identify perhaps mannerisms of students that, ah, I'm with you on that. Or a student that perhaps is not participating and can identify, OK, this student, when you covered this topic, was not as engaged and could be. Is any of that really viable or possible?
Yeah, it's real. There's some models out there that is using facial recognition to decide if you are engaged in the content or not. My only thing in this moment right now is, I think if the community decides that's what they want, is a different conversation than a teacher, someone else deciding what they want. I mean, that's taking some images, right? Like, that is, I've seen that model in other countries. I think there's a whole process of bringing that kind of technology on, and if and how that is done. But there is some, there is facial recognition out there that's trying to look at the engaged mind.
OK, so it's not like the mirror, mirror on the wall, and they know all and everything. It's still looking at some very basic, finite things.
Everything's algorithms. So there's always someone behind the curtain trying to decide, what does it look like to not be engaged, right? And those are theories. And as you collect more data, you can say, you know, this is starting to play out. Or actually, this is not, they're just deadpanned always, right? So that is part of that thing. And I can, I can show you some of those things if you want to particularly look at that.
No, Danny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Go back to what you said about the contract, because I'm curious, how do you know if they're breaking the contract or not?
Yeah, so I would love, and further series, to bring back people who read this for a living. I'm, my credentials are not really here, but I have learned enough that I do purchase things, because then there is a contract with that purchase. And I do go ahead and read some of these things. There has been a movement that I'm grateful for. They're trying to get into common language, right? More of the language I speak, not these lawyer language that like, it means nothing to me. I appreciate people can write and speak like that. So let's answer that at another time. Admittedly, I will admit, I trust that when this says it is not collecting my data, I'm trusting that it is not. I've turned that piece off. There is a social contract there of trust. We'll bring in some experts to tell us, like, what does the fine print mean on that? And I'm happy to have them analyze this and be like, Jake said he's this, is it true? There's always, this seems to, if there's a lawyer, there's always fine print.
Yes.
I mean that endearingly, Mark.
With all due respect.
With all due respect.
Debbie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To follow up on Danny's question, I'm curious, at one and a half speed, keeping it under one minute, what she would say the answer to his question would be?
You can ask it another time. I will take directions from Kathy however you want. I have actually asked and got some promptings of what do I need to look for in contracts? So if it's super dubious, it could lead me astray. But it did actually help said, here are some four domains you want to be looking for when you're looking at these tools. And I thought it upskilled my reasoning.
OK. I just wanted to say, I kind of use it like a card catalog. Like you said, to point me in a direction, then I'm going to do my own research. So just a caveat on just whatever she said.
Absolutely. And that's a great way of using it.
OK. Yes, absolutely.
So most of my life, at a young age, I went down to the local camera store and bought a Kodak 30 camera. And the very next week, Kodak came out with another model. This is in the 1960s, I was a young, and I was so outraged. I actually wrote a letter to Kodak, how would you do this? I just bought this, and you released a new, because in that era, it didn't change that rapidly, right? And I've always been kind of enamored by technology. And, you know, I wanted the CB and the nice CB and, you know, the early adopter. I am not here, I do this. But I think, and I'm saying this to educators, we need to slow down. Because people are wanting to sell us things. And this is more powerful than the internet, which, I was an early adopter. It used to be a screen-based thing. I had to do, I had to log in and dial up, all right? But I, Melanie, I still agree, until we train in education, that when I ask, it's just not going to agree with me. It's going to start to give me alternate things. And you can train bots to do that. I'm really reluctant, because what will happen if you, my opinion, totally my opinion, early adopters are just going to use it in ways that aren't analytical. And then we're going to be trying to backtrack from that. And it's not because anyone intends to do that, but I think the study out of MIT would validate that, that people that said, help me draft this, they, you know, then initially, they were going back and forth, Michelle. Like, I draft, you draft, which is what you want to do. By about the second or third day, they were just letting AI write it for them. And then that's when you start to wonder, especially if you're nine or if you're 12. So I love it from an adult standpoint, Debbie, and, you know, experimenting and us thinking about it, just like giving your child the chainsaw. Right? You gotta, is it time? And am I going to sit down with my kid and I'm going to walk through this? Because not every teacher and every parent's going to sit down with the child and walk through it. So Jake's going to be in front of you for next several months. As you start to formulate, what is your role in this policy development, knowing it is coming very fast at every level in our environment? And how can you help educators make good sense out of it?
Did you have a quick thing, sir?
Yeah, very quick. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I keep going back to when we had that Stanford professor, it was maybe a year ago, talked to us over Zoom. And I printed his presentation off, and on the back of it had the disclaimer that this was written by a human being.
Yeah. I remember you brought that up to me before.
For some reason, that just really hit me. That's why I'm so hard on this AI.
Yeah. Yeah, it's creepy. Thank you so much. This has been wonderful, and we really appreciate, because I'm definitely the one of just, I want to be doomsday about it. But it is here, it's real, and we have to have the conversations and the knowledge. Because like you said, if we're afraid, it's because we don't have enough knowledge to handle it and know what to do. So thank you, it was wonderful. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
OK, we're going to go ahead and move into our report on computer science education in Kansas. Dr. Stephen King, thank you, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. Thank you. It's been a while since I had the opportunity to appear in front of you, talking about my favorite topic. I am Stephen King. It's a popular name. I used to feel bad about it, but I went to, I actually went to West Point with another Steve King, Stephen King and a Tom Sawyer. And believe it or not, a Buck Rogers. And they promoted him, of course, to the rank of cadet captain. So that was, that was fun. So after I got out of the service, I ended up drifting into tech education, because it was a love of mine. I'd enjoyed it way back when we were connecting Apples together with phone lines and Apple Talk and that sort of thing. So I've been doing it a while. I've been in tech education for 30 years. I have been with the Department of Education now for eight years. Actually, in two weeks, it'll be eight years. So, and the joy of my job, part of the, part of the great thing about my job, I think, is that I get to spend time with feet in both areas. So I am the computer science academic standards consultant. And at the same time, I am the IT CTE pathway, cluster consultant. And those are two subtly but importantly different fields. And that's going to play a part in today's presentation, because, as you know, academics is where we try to get students to learn things that are going to benefit them after they graduate, no matter what field they're in. So, you know, all fields. And when I presented the standards to the board back in 2019, that was one of the questions I had, is that are we trying to turn all of our Kansas graduates into programmers? And the answer was no, absolutely not. Programming is, has been debatable right now, a really wonderful CTE field, driven by, as all CTE fields are, by local needs, a comprehensive local needs assessment for local business and industry. So, you know, if local business and industry doesn't need programming, then it doesn't call for a pathway. Computer science is broader than that. And we keep using the term computational thinking. If you see me kind of wince when someone uses computer science and programming and coding as synonyms, which I do a lot, it's because they're not. Programming is one part of computer science, but, and I'll get to the standards here in a bit. So anyway, that kind of, that's, what I'm here to do is to update you on where we are in computer science, a little bit less on the IT CTE area. So when I got here in 2017, computer science really didn't, wasn't practiced as an academic discipline. Now, we were teaching classes. There were programming classes and so on. There were course codes in the book. But there weren't any standards. There wasn't a consultant. There wasn't, you know, any sort of, the typical things we think of, like with math and ELA and so on, those academic efforts that happened. There wasn't an endorsement. Now, there used to be. There was a computer studies endorsement from the mid-1980s up through about the year 2000. And what happened is, it just, it wasn't being used. One of the issues in Kansas is that if an endorsement exists, and you're going to teach a class in that area, then you have to have the endorsement. It wasn't used. Now, when I started, actually, when I studied it in about 2020 or so, we actually had 19 teachers who still had that endorsement. We've had a couple retire at this point. So if you can imagine, there's, you know, 17, maybe 16, 17 teachers with that endorsement, which, again, we stopped using 25 years ago. So it kind of gives you an idea for where those teachers are in their, in their teaching lifecycle. So we did have an active CTE cluster. The year before I started, it had five pathways. They reduced it by one based upon the business and industry needs to four pathways. And then in 2018, we were approached by some of the computer science industry leaders in Kansas, saying this deserves to be its own academic subject. Which, you know, again, an academic subject is something, and since then, I've been roaming the state, talking to people. And, you know, things like a combine, for example, will drive itself. And it does so based upon GPS data, the algorithms inside. And this is, you know, it is primitive, can be considered primitive, artificial intelligence. But it's not really generative artificial intelligence. It's just that the algorithms inside, they go through and they drive it, they maximize yields, they maximize all kinds of things. The computer is doing all of this. And sometimes you have a person just sitting there, making sure they don't run over small animals. There is a large trader manufacturer up in the north central part of the state. It's a multi-billion dollar company. And he had started after World War II, building traders by hand, welding the machines. And then he had, you know, grown into agricultural, military trader manufacturing. And when I toured there, they had two buildings, which they didn't have anybody in. It was all automated. And my question to him is, where do you get the people who know how to work this? And he says, we don't. We have to train them. We have to, you know, get people and build them ourselves. And so those are just a couple of examples of, you know, we talk about the CTE pathways, but in all industries, computer science, computational thinking, which when we presented to the board, I had Dr. Josh Weiss, a K-State professor, who is one of the leading experts in computer science pedagogy. He talked about computational thinking and what it is, what it's not. One thing he specifically said is, it is not just programming. So we began the standards development work in 2018. Because there was a very effective national set of standards through Computer Science Teachers Association, the work went pretty quickly. It took us about nine months. We got the model, we went down to P, so pre-K, up through 12th grade CS standards in 2019. Those have, at the elementary level, those are broken out by grade level. And then in middle grades and high school, those are broken out into bands. They have five topics. And as I was pointing out, it is not just programming. So when we talk about programming being important, you know, the organization called code.org is actually considering changing their name. The only classes they count, so when you see statistics comparing states for computer science classes offered by high school, they only count programming classes, which I've been arguing, anyway. So the five topics, you know, computing systems, the things that make these machines work. I checked into something this past weekend, and I used my phone to scan a QR code that I had, you know, created. And the little iPad thing just sat there and spanned, spun. And I was like, should it take this long? No. Well, that's a computing systems thing. I knew what to do with it, but they wouldn't let me touch their iPad. So they ended up getting it fixed. It took a while. Networks and the internet, you've probably heard of the topic cybersecurity. This has been and will continue to be a major topic. It does involve some programming, but it really is a philosophy and a customer-centric way of approach to data. I heard some questions about, you know, how do we know that the AI programs are good in the classroom? How do we know that they're following their own contracts? That's all within the realm of cybersecurity. And so it is a very important topic for our graduates to understand. Data analysis is the one that artificial intelligence would not exist without data analysis. Neither would those little things that I get from Kroger, or actually from Dylan's, every single month. And magically, they know what I'm going to buy that month. Isn't that weird? You know, that just is data analysis. Of course, algorithms and programming, we know the impacts of computing include things like the ethics of, sorry, sir, the ethics, how we use them to work around. And again, some of these questions that I heard asked during the previous presentation about artificial intelligence fall directly into that particular area of the standards. So those are our computer science standards. They still are there. They're still adopted by the board, adopted in 2019 in April. You know, we, I'm currently on the committee with CSTA. They're updating their standards. They're updating their standards to include artificial intelligence. And that will probably And that will probably come out in the third draft sometime this spring. Once they have adopted their new set of standards, we may, you know, we'll probably take a look at, at our state standards. But that's where we are right now. They've been working pretty well for us. After we adopted the standards, we were asked to create a computer science implementation committee that took the recommendations of code.org, the national, they hate when I call them a lobbying organization, but that's what they are. Their recommendations for computer science and looked at how we operate here in Kansas with our particular interest in, in local control and that sort of thing. So the five recommendations that the committee, and this committee, by the way, was all Kansas people. Some high schools, some elementary school teachers, some business and industry, some post-secondary educators. And actually, we had a couple of legislators on it too. The five recommendations that came out of that committee were dedicated statewide computer science education position, encourage all schools offer computer science, computer science satisfy a core graduation requirement, the endorsement and funding, the big, always a big topic. So the dedicated statewide computer science education position is me. The national organization says it should be dedicated and only do computer science and not do CTE. And they do that, they say that because of basically a workload type of thing. And it is work to do both because CTE this time of year is very, very busy. On the other hand, I find a lot of value having someone who understands both sides of the field. Because for example, and I mentioned programming before, a couple of years ago, programming was the field to go into. I've been doing this for 30 years now and I've actually seen this happen. I've seen programming be a great field to go into and infrastructure, which is my area. I've built Apple Talk networks. I built Cisco Systems. I've, I've, I've worked with making machines communicate back and forth. That's, that was my, my professional thing. And I got into web design. So, so I've seen both of those areas kind of ebb and flow over the years. I've seen a fairly consistent growing need for computer science people in general. And across all disciplines, this computational thinking, the demand is still continuing to skyrocket. Artificial intelligence, on the other hand, is a very powerful tool. And as you heard just a little bit ago, artificial intelligence will write, I've had it write a love poem to Medusa before. That was kind of weird, but I, just to see if it would do it. I've had it write policy statements. Have it, we've had it write all kinds of things. We've had it write programs. You can have it write programs in Java. You can have it write programs in Python. You can have it write programs in COBOL. And so it is taking some of the programming jobs. There have been big flashy headlines about, you know, this company is laying off 30% of their programming force. This company is laying off 70% of their programming force. The, the headlines that aren't quite as flashy are that they are finding that AI can program, but it's not real good at it. And so they're finding that they still have to have human beings touch the, the program, make sure that everything works. Now, the problem is that the field, that the, the positions that AI can do happen to also be the entry level positions, which is kind of a really bad double news, double hit news on, on the CTE field right now. It really is. And you, so you'll see statistics on, you know, a high unemployment rate for recent computer science grads. And, and at the post-secondary level, a lot of times, computer science does mean programming. That's what they teach a lot of times at the, at the upper level of post-secondary. So, like I said, it's, right now, if you just look at CTE, it looks scary for programmers, for that one pathway. What that's come out with then is we see people commenting on social media in various computer science education groups and boards and so on, that, well, since programming is a declining field, we don't need to teach computer science anymore. And I can kind of understand the logic, but it's absolutely wrong. This is still a vital field to, to, to teach students, a vital, computational thinking is still, and probably is even more important for our students. So again, that's why I'm, okay, dedicated. We may not fit that definition by, by code.org's definition, but, but we do have a, a position for that. And I've been here eight years. I'm pretty happy with it. Encourage all schools to offer computer science is kind of fluffy. It's hard to measure that one. We did, the board did say, everybody should offer computer science. We've done studies, code.org keeps tracking, again, those are programming classes. It was 26%. Now it's up in the high 30% of, of Kansas high schools that offer a class that meets their definition. We're still not at the highest level. We're still not up there with other states. But we've also shown, seen that those are the biggest schools in the state. And so while it's only, it was only 26%, we did that number and it was about 70% of high school students in Kansas had access to one of those courses, just because of the nature of the schools that offered and didn't offer the course. The PAC Act, of course, changed that a little bit because it mandated that all high schools offer a computer science class. That's where we get into the, what does offer mean? Because it ended up not showing up on a lot of high schools' schedule. They would offer it and have nobody sign up for it. And so again, this is something that I think needs further discussion. It is a policy discussion, probably above, you know, my, my rank and insignia, but it is an important discussion. Core graduation requirements, we've, we've had a change in our graduation requirements. And so we, we did agree that in, in, at the 2021 meeting in June, the board approved language that said that computer science could be, at district's local controlled choice, counted as one of the math or science credits as long as the student achieved their topical expectations. Which if you, if you go through the regulation, it says, for example, three credits in math, which must include algebraic and geometric concepts. So the wording then, what I've been telling you is if the student comes out and understands algebra and geometry, but they only needed two credits to get there, two high school credits. Maybe they took an algebra one back in middle school and that didn't count. Then they can supplement that with a third credit in computer science at district discretion. Similar to science, science requires a minimum of three credits. They have to be in biological science, physical science and, and/or space science. So they have to satisfy those three topics. And then if they do in two credits, they can, anyway. That's, again, that's just saying that districts have the local control to, to count what they want, where they want. We did change the minimum graduation requirements. We added a, an advanced STEM class, which can be computer science. I still get asked, so what is actually the Kansas computer science graduation requirement? And there isn't one technically, because the advanced STEM class doesn't have to be computer science. It can be any of the great advanced STEM classes. Of course, I'm biased, but the reality is that there are a lot of courses that can satisfy that requirement. The licensure endorsement is a fun one because, again, it's a case of, as soon as we approve the licensure endorsement, teachers who teach the classes that that is an endorsement for have to have the endorsement. And, and so when we get toward the endorsement being active where that's a policy decision, a policy discussion we need to have. Currently, according to Shane Carter, our, our director of TLA, it is in the queue to be submitted for changes with, with other endorsement questions. It didn't go up in the last time because of the emergency substitute license change that was really pressing. But it basically has to go to, to the Department of Admin, come back and be approved by the board. So that's where we stand. We, we've created the endorsement. It is, as written, praxis-based. And so that will be, that'll be very useful when, when we get it. So the funding, the PAC Act. And we had PAC, of course, I'm blanking out on what the, the name stands for. Promoting the advancement of computer knowledge, I think. House Bill 24, 2246. In 2022, it required all, all high schools, all secondary schools to offer computer science class. And then separately, as a result of that, the, the legislature earmarked a million dollars as state grants to provide for high school teacher preparation, according to certain requirements. And it also mandated some reporting that we had to do to the legislature. It sunset, it, it was explicitly written to sunset in, in June of this year. And it has not been replaced. So currently, there, there is no PAC Act. Also, the, the million dollar grant in the budget was, was provided in 22, 23 and 24, but, but has not been provided for this year. So, so that's where we are on the PAC Act. Now, there's been some discussion of, of a PAC Act version two. And so whenever that comes up, I, I like to point out that, you know, the PAC Act was very specific in terms of who it, who we could grant the money to. There was nothing in there for a, a coherent definition of what we're doing in computer science as far as training goes. It was a competitive grant. But we had to take the grants that were, that were sent to us. And so we, we really, I think, got some grants, got some grant requests that wouldn't have been my first choice. Now, it ended up being a very useful training opportunity or learning opportunity for me. And I plan on writing up the results of that here, here fairly soon. Once I get the, the final reports from this last PAC Act, we're only due a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, working through how many teachers they trained and I will, so you see here, we got 218 teachers trained the first year, 108 the year after that. And again, I don't really know, I don't have that number for the, for the previous year. What does trained mean? We had some of the grant, grantees who were offering boot camp sort of things, which, which are great. In prepping a, a teacher to teach a specific class. We had at the other end of that, K-State, which was offering and is still offering their computational core using the PAC Act and, and another national grant to fund that. Which, which basically is graduate level K-State credits taught by K-State professors in a, in, you know, mostly online rigorous K-State environment. And it was really the, the teachers, the feedback that I got was it was night and day difference. The teachers who were in the boot camp never had any homework, never, you know, the teachers who went to K-State had their, their classes to worry about, had everything else, and they had a graduate level class homework. And so K-State's program was fairly popular, but they had a problem getting students, getting teachers to complete it. So each one of them had some, some issues. One of the biggest things with the PAC Act that I, I felt was missing, and we saw this when we required high schools to offer a computer science class and the roster ended up empty. Arkansas, which is considered one of the better states in terms of computer science, computer science education, anyway. At the end of their first five years, they ran a report showing how many, you know, how many students and, and teachers and so on. They were bragging about one of the, I heard 2,200% increase in the number of licensed teachers, which sounds like a really big number, but as I, and I'm friends with both the previous and the current Arkansas State supervisor. And I remind them that when you start with a, you know, a single digit number, 2,200% isn't that big of an increase. And then they remind me, it's still bigger than Kansas. Okay. But the, the secret, the, the studies regarding when our kids figure out what they want to do, show us that if you haven't approached computational thinking in earlier grades, even down to elementary school, then the kids who might otherwise decide want to be in the computer science class have already decided to go other directions. And so to, to build computational thinking in the state of Kansas, in, in my opinion, and according to the studies that I've seen, we really need to focus this in earlier grades, not just high school. If we focus on high school, we're focusing on the wrong end. The other, and, and the bigger technical problem is because it was a state grant, and I, I spent a lot of time with our fiscal department discussing ways to do this, and we just couldn't. Because it was a state grant, it can't go past state fiscal boundaries, which is, you know, as you know, July 1st to June 30th. Well, teachers tend to want to take professional development in that June or July timeframe. And when someone, a grantee has to provide training, follow up on it, bill, and then provide those bills as a reimbursement basis to us, and it all has to be done by June 30th, they have a hard time getting it done meaningfully. And they also have a hard time, you know, ESDAK and Cleedea was here yesterday. By the way, I personally very much appreciate the honor you gave to Cleedea McCrory. I, I've known her for several years now and she is very well deserving of that. But one of the things they tried to do is provide multi-year mentoring. And they couldn't do that in a reimbursed level, reimbursed basis through the grant structure. So that was one of the things that the, the PAC Act grant can't do, as, as written. Now, the first year, we had a problem granting all million dollars just because it was such a short timeframe. Second year, million, third year, million. You see the numbers and who the grantees were. And I think I'm probably, oh, I'm way over time. I apologize. So, Madam Chair, I will open it for questions.
Thank you, sir. Danny, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So could you go back? What did you say that, that multi-billion dollar company, so they trained their own?
Yes.
So we didn't have to spend any money training those trainers. They trained them themselves.
That is correct.
Huh, that's kind of interesting. And, and you said there, you, you all are already working on standards for AI?
Yes, sir. They are doing, the, the new update of the Computer Science Teachers Association standards includes both practices around AI and standards related to AI.
Thank you, sir. And the reason I bring that up, board, is because that's how fast it's moved, with all due respect to board members.
It is moving faster. And, and my, the, the, the presentation previous to me did point out, my, my cynical perspective usually catches up to me here. It happens that the multi-billion dollar corporations that stand to gain the most, and, and they're talking trillions of dollars from the, from the rapid implementation of artificial intelligence, are also the organizations that own most of our media and social media platforms. And so there is a lot of hype driving AI. It, it's a tool. It's a great tool. It's been around for a while and it has a lot of great possibilities.
Melody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. King. During the previous presentation on AI, I was writing notes about computational thinking because really it's, the question that we were discussing then is essentially, how do you ask a better question? And the benefits of teaching students at every age and every level about computational thinking, not teaching them about it, teaching them how to think that way, makes them better students of life. And so an example of that would be, you know, when I think about it in the context of what does a student in CS need to learn? It's how does my email or my, the website that I'm looking at get to my screen? Like, what are the mechanics behind that? How do I fix my Wi-Fi when it goes down? You know, that troubleshooting and kind of problems, problems. You know, that troubleshooting and kind of problem-solving aspect. And then on the AI front, how does AI arrive at that answer? Like, what are the mechanics behind that? So my question for you is, do you perhaps have a vision for how to fit computational thinking into our existing standards, particularly at those lower grades? I think about things like, well, to borrow from code.org, the drag-and-drop learning how to code, that's a great way for kids to start to understand some of those processes. So have you given any consideration to where this lands in our standards?
Yes, ma'am, I have, and code.org has. As I said, they're, they may be changing their name. They have already changed the national event every year that they sponsor from Hour of Code to Hour of AI. As far as what Kansas has done, I have submitted a document that specifically addresses how to integrate computer science standards into the other disciplines. I've submitted it to our communications. It's a big document, so it's going to take a while for editing and, you know, formatting and all that sort of thing. But we are working on a document that should help with that. And once the document is created, I've actually got a team of, I've got 18 applicants, a team that I'm whittling down to, of actual teachers in Kansas, to help me figure out how best to train the field on that. Because it's, I think that's the biggest thing we've been missing, is how, how do we get teachers? Teachers have always been comfortable doing what they've been doing for the past 20, 25 years. That's why so many of our government reform efforts just fall flat. And so what's important is to help them understand and be comfortable within implementing this in an interesting way, in a way that they understand will help their students.
Just a quick follow-up. So am I understanding you correctly that you would be seeking to have classroom teachers, again, thinking elementary school, and that that would be embedded into the work that they're doing? Or are you talking about separate credentials for CS, where you would have a CS teacher in elementary? Or something like it?
The credentials end up being a different, little bit different topic. I do intend, and Computer Science Teachers Association, as an example, when they do their national conference, have an entire section of trainings on ways to integrate the standards into various elementary classes. And a lot of teachers find they're already doing these things. It's just adding the language around, how do you, okay, that game where they're guessing who has a ticket, they already play that. That's a sorting algorithm, and you don't have to call it sorting algorithm, but you can at least implement language around it that the students understand that they're doing something in computational thinking. And that's the exciting part. It isn't changing what they're doing, it's just changing the way they're thinking about it and helping their students think about it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a short question, Dr. King. You mentioned the timeframe, the July 1st to June 30th, whatever, for the PAC, and whether that comes around again, it's not, you know, we don't know. So I'm thinking for the future, and I've had this conversation with Cleo, and she's frustrated by that very point that you made, there's not the time to train. She's thinking 18 to 24 months is a much more, you know, workable timeframe that's funded. Is, do you have any ideas about, and you talked about going into industry and stuff, partnerships or something, or something we can, or that can be done in scholarships through partnerships or something that would be more effective? Am I making sense?
You are, sir. And we had one started in 2021, I believe, 2022. It was right at the tail end of the real heat of COVID. And unfortunately, the organization funding it stopped funding it. So it dissolved. I'm currently working with a group out of Wichita that might turn into something like that. But that, my ultimate goal would be a private, public-private sort of partnership. Because again, our fiscal department tells me that there is no way to take a state grant and stretch it outside of the fiscal boundaries. So a public-private partnership could do that, and that would really be my personal goal. It's just hard to do.
And I don't know how those things work specifically, but it seems like if the training would be upfront, so when you describe that scenario of the factory, you know, or the manufacturing not having to do all that training, that they would, you know, it would be benefit to them to provide scholarship money. I'm just trying to figure out how this could be funded for a teacher training, and that children could, you know, or students could be leaving with.
Yes, sir. There's a, there are a lot of details on that, and to be honest, I don't believe any state, and there's no state that I've looked into that is doing that well.
And we're going to have to kind of move this along. So I've got two on the board, so as quick as we can. So Danny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On some of the statistics you were quoting, could you please send us where you had those statistics, so we can look at them to make sure of what you're saying when you're talking 2,200%? I'm sorry, but I'd like to see where that was, where the stats are, those types of things. If you could send that to us, please, we'd really appreciate it. And then I'll just make one statement. What does this have to do with academics?
Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this will be really quick because it's not even a question, I'm just planting a seed of a thought. We talked yesterday about proprietary Lexile measures, and it occurred to me, I see Beth back there, and I'm thinking, why do we not have within our schools the ability for AI to just set some Lexile measures for the books that we have in our schools? Obviously, it's proprietary, so it'd have to be our own kind of measurement, but based off of our, it just seems like AI should be able to help us save money on that, because it costs money to participate in this proprietary Lexile measurement system. But why could we not let, because it doesn't, it's low risk, so a kid gets a book that maybe is not quite within their Lexile range. It's not, that's something you can tweak and fix. It's not going to have catastrophic effects, but it would maybe save money, and we have smart people.
Thank you, Dr. King. Very much appreciate the presentation. Board, we are going to take a 10-minute break and get ourselves moving here. So we'll be back at 10:27 by my computer.
Okay, we are back and our next guests are going to be talking to us about, we're just on a whole tech run right now. Digital safety, health and safety and concerns for students. So we have Katie Kincaid Longhauser. She does have a educational platform, I don't even really know what to call what you do, but it's called the Screen Guardians. And she has partnered with Kevin Cronister, a detective with the Internet Crimes Against Children out of Task Force in the KC Metro area. So we're just going to keep taking in information and get an understanding of what's going on, what's out there and what can we do. So thank you for being here, Katie, and you're welcome.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the board. Thanks for this opportunity to be here this morning. It's an honor to present this. Today, we're going to talk about digital health and safety. My name is Katie Longhauser. I am a former nurse, a current owner of a digital agency, and so I spend a lot of time in the online space. I'm also a wife and mother to three children who are thirteen, ten, and eight, so we're very busy. In recent years, I have become more of an advocate for protection of children, specifically in the online space, which is what led me here today. I have partnered with Kevin, Detective Kevin Cronister, my colleague here. He's going to introduce himself a little bit further, but I will quickly share. He's a fifteen-year law enforcement veteran and a lead detective for ICAC, which stands for Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Today, we're going to talk about some concerns with screens and their impact on learning, their impact on health. And then Kevin's going to talk more specifically on screens' impact on safety. So for the first time in US history, children are spending more time on screens than in school. Screens are not simply as simple as they once were. Twenty-five years ago, a screen was simply a device to watch TV on. The average household had about two or three screens. And if you were lucky, you had a computer with dial-up internet service, I remember that. Today, it is, fast forward to today, the only, not only does everyone or most children, twelve and above and on to adults, not only have a screen in their pocket or in a personal bag of some sort, but those screens are mini computers that can access the internet, search anything, watch anything, and communicate with anyone in the world in a matter of seconds. Today, the average household has seventeen screens, screens or devices with such capability. The reality of this is a stark contrast from what we once knew, and it's equally exciting and convenient as it is frightening and dangerous. Now let's look at the school environment. How do screens impact learning? From past presentations or speakers, you know excessive screen use contributes to lower test scores, decreased reading comprehension, and negatively impacts memory and empathy. However, that's not our focus today. This presentation is about how distraction, how does the distractions, devices, or screens cause, and the negative impact that has on learning. Screens are naturally drawn to gravitate, our eyes are naturally, will naturally gravitate towards screens. It's part of how they're engineered to do just that, capture and hold our attention, and they do so through persuasive design and activating our brain's reward pathway. Screens are not neutral. They are designed to make us focus on them and keep our focus on them. Now imagine the battle a young child has in a classroom. Listening to a teacher while on a device where they can click, scroll, and find anything more interesting than the current lesson they're supposed to focus on. That current student might also try to be engaging and listening in the classroom, but their neighbor or somebody in front of them is engaging on a device, scrolling, clicking on something, and they're distracted again. We can all imagine it because we've been in that scenario or something like it. This is not an adequate environment to support learning. Teachers report increased, the increased difficulty maintaining focus in a classroom. Sixty-five percent of students report being distracted while using digital devices for schoolwork. Fifty-nine students, percent of students report being distracted when students near them use digital devices. This multitasking increases cognitive load. From screen to real life, back to screen again, that cognitive load takes a wear and tear on the body. We see physiological impact in that, such as increased heart rate, increased blood pressure, and increased levels of cortisol, which weakens the immune system. In addition to that, we see test scores also dramatically decreased and behavior acts, behavior problems and complications from that. In addition to that, if that's not enough, devices often have access to unapproved or inappropriate sites because content filters are not a hundred percent effective. Screens also have an impact on brain health. In schools where there is excessive screen use, consumption of stimulating content, and gamified learning programs, children's reward centers of their brain become overstimulated. While their critical thinking part of their brain, that prefrontal cortex or judgment center, is understimulated, this leaves kids more emotional, less motivated, and less able to push through challenges. This is the same reward pathway, also known as the dopamine loop, or I call the dopamine roller coaster. It is the same pathway active in addictions, and it is the exact cycle being initiated in our children on a daily basis. In addition to the negative impact screens can have on the brain, they also have negative impacts on the mental, emotional health. Screen time is linked to poor mental health. Kids who spend four-plus hours a day on screens have increased rates of anxiety, depression, and acts of self-harm. With the flood of dopamine kids are receiving through screens, it's no wonder they're moody, less motivated, and we're seeing behavioral issues in the classroom in addition to decline in school performance. My sister's a fourth-grade teacher, she has been for years. She told me yesterday she has never had a year as challenging as this one. Kids are not engaging in the classroom, their eyes are glazed over. There's this general sense of apathy she's never witnessed before. She says it's disheartening and very discouraging. She loves teaching, but it's making her question. These are the same kids who were four during COVID and have been indoctrinated with device dependence. Finally, more screen use leads to decreased social connection, eye contact, and understanding of social cues and behavior. This weakens children's ability to show empathy. It is easier for kids to say things online when they don't have a sense of empathy than they would to someone's face. All right, more screens equal more problems, so more screens. Ninety-five percent of teens have smartphones. One in four have their own smartphone by the time they're eight. And eighty-eight percent of public schools in the US have implemented a one-to-one computer program supplied by their school. Not only are these problems related to decreased learning, brain health, compromise, mental and emotional health, but there's compromises to children's safety when we choose to use screens as much as we are. Internet crimes are the fastest-growing crimes in the US, and children are the fastest-growing victim pool. We have a legal obligation to protect children. Both Kansas law and federal law require schools to protect kids online. The Kansas Children's Internet Protection Act requires districts to use filtering software to block harmful content. At the federal level, the Children's Internet Protection Act ties funding to these same obligations. Schools must filter content, monitor student use, and educate. Educate students on the cyberbullying and social media risk. But not only do we have to think about how kids, students' interaction online is potentially leading to harm, but we also have to think about how we are protecting their privacy. Recent cases like that of Power School data breach and the current IXL lawsuit remind us that student data is vulnerable and privacy protection aren't always clear. Compliance sets the floor, but true protection means going further. Safeguarding student privacy, teaching safe digital habits, and equipping families to respond when risk arises. All right, I'm going to say it again, more screens, more problems. Internet crimes are the fastest-growing crimes in the US, and children are the fastest-growing victim pool. More devices, more time online equals greater exposure to grooming, sextortion, cyberbullying, and exploitation. Close to sixty percent of teens ever receive an email or instant message from a stranger, and half have responded back. Over seventy-five percent of internet crimes involving sexual solicitation of children and exposure to unwanted pornography is not reported. Again, over seventy-five percent is not reported to police or parents. It is imminent that we take action to prepare and protect our children from online crimes. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Detective Kevin Cronister. I also have some statistics and a short stint of an article recently published by the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children that I'm going to hand out to you guys, if that's okay.
Good morning, thank you guys for having us. Obviously, this is an incredibly important topic, it's something that I've dedicated my life to. And so, as Katie said, I'm a detective with the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, which is a national task force that works with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. And so, as a fifteen-year law enforcement veteran, this is, this is essentially all I've done my career is investigate crimes against children. And so, I'm going to talk to you guys just a little bit about the digital safety risks for kids. And my goal with the fifteen-ish minutes I have left is to maybe shine a light a little bit on the problem and then to recommend what I believe to be the solution, which, surprise, surprises, more education, which is why we're here in front of you guys. So digital safety risks for kids, obviously exposure to harmful content, exploitation and predation, and then bullying and harassment. With the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, we get cyber tips. These are tips that come from internet service providers, social media companies, parents, teachers, really anybody who comes across what they believe could be a crime against a child taking place over the internet. We end up with a, with a tip. And if you guys will, will look at page two of that document that Katie just handed you, it has a chart on it with some statistics, and it shows the statistics just from last year to this year. And the increase in the number of crimes against children taking place over the internet that we've had over the course of one year. It's an incredible increase, and while that is national, those are national statistics, I can tell you based on the number of cyber tips that I have sitting in my queue back at the office right now that Kansas absolutely follows that same trend of increase. This is a problem that law enforcement cannot tackle on their own. We do not have the resources and we're very reactive about the problem, right? We wait until the problem occurs and then we go and we investigate it. And the problem with that approach is we are always chasing the bad guy and never getting out ahead of the problem and preventing it in the first place, which is what I believe the solution to be. I have, right now, over probably two thousand cyber tips sitting in my queue. I get twenty more every week, and I can probably successfully investigate maybe one of those tips all the way through within a month or so. And by the time I investigate ten of them, I've got a hundred more. So the obvious solution to this problem is to prevent me from getting cyber tips in the first place, which is what Katie and I are doing. We're advocating for additional education for students, parents, teachers, to all kind of come together and learn about how these things can be prevented. Because I can tell you that a majority of my cases that I see are one hundred percent preventable. So with exposure to harmful content, obviously, school devices have content filters. For the most part, content filters do a pretty good job filtering out harmful content. What they don't do a good job of is filtering out students' ability to access social media or chat-type applications where they can talk to each other or talk to adults, maybe talk to people they think are children but are actually adults. And so, the content filters are great, but they're, they're not addressing the bigger issue, which is the social media aspect. And with technology continuing to evolve at an incredible rate, it's hard for the content filters to keep up with the evolution of technology, right? And so, they've got easy access to pornography, violence, and harmful communities. Another thing that's in that article that we handed you is a discussion about some of these groups that are in increasing violent behavior over the internet and encouraging kids to not only spread, you know, maybe nude photos or child sexual abuse material, but also to harm themselves, harm other people, encourage school shootings, encourage suicide. And so, this is, this is, it's gone beyond just, you know, hey, I want a nude photo of you, right? And now, now they're, they're creating games where the ultimate goal is to see how many kids they can get to self-harm, et cetera. And so, the, the danger to kids is increasing, not just in number, but in severity. Exploitation and predation, I already touched on that. Online grooming, sextortion, and trafficking concerns. Bullying and harassment is another one that, you know, we don't always think of as potentially an internet crime against a child. But I have worked several cases now where children have gone on to commit suicide or self-harm or, you know, rely on substances, et cetera, because of bullying and harassment that they have endured over the internet. And there's a direct correlation with absenteeism, lower achievement, and self-harm. Like I said before, when kids show up to school and they're exhausted emotionally, psychologically, and physically because of what they're doing on the internet, they obviously are not learning and they're not growing into the people that we want them to be. Ninety percent of children ages eight to sixteen have seen pornography online while doing homework. Okay, so that means that either they're stumbling across it accidentally while they're working on assignments through search engines or whatever the case is, or they get bored and distracted and they search it out. But regardless, ninety percent of kids eight to sixteen have seen it. And that, the low end of that range being eight is shocking to me, I don't know why, because I've been doing this for a long time. You would think that it wouldn't shock me anymore. But I have five kids myself, and I have a nine-year-old, and I, I don't know that he would have any idea even what he was looking at, right? And so, that's shocking to me. And forty-four percent of those kids did it on school-owned devices, which is also problematic, because as a parent, I can take your cellphone, I can take your iPod, I can take your smartwatch, but you got to take that device to school. And so, it's got to go with you. And so, they're, they're finding ways to use their school-owned devices to access things that they, that they shouldn't be accessing. Over three hundred million children are victims of technology-facilitated exploitation and abuse each year. There are between two thousand, it depends on the numbers, two thousand to five thousand at any given time, ICAC detectives across the country. So three hundred million tips for two to five thousand detectives. You can do the math, it's impossible for us to address this issue on our own. Twelve and a half percent experience non-consensual sharing, and I'll talk a little bit about that soon. I have a case study from the Spring Hill School District involving non-consensual sharing of sexual photos. And then twelve and a half percent have faced online solicitation like sexting or sexual talk. And we got thirty-six point two million reports from Nick Mc in 2023. And obviously, you guys can see how the trend is, so by 2025, we're, we're looking at quite a bit more. I'm not going to belabor AI too much, because you guys have already been talking about that all morning. But we saw a one thousand three hundred and twenty-five percent increase in generative AI reports, meaning children whose faces were taken and placed onto the nude photo of somebody else, et cetera. And online enticement and child sex trafficking have also rose, risen sharply. Fifty-five percent increase in trafficking from 2023, which is scary to me, because what that means is because what that means is these aren't just staying online, these cases, these men, ninety-nine percent of them are men, are physically taking and moving these children somewhere. And then online enticement is up by a hundred and ninety-two percent. So, scary statistics, right? Like, it seems doom and gloom. But one thing that Katie and I have seen that gives me some hope is we have had dozens and dozens of parents, groups, nonprofits, schools reach out to us specifically and ask for education on this topic so that they can try to attack this from the front end. And so, you can't solve a problem until you know it's a problem. And based on the contact we've had with schools and parents and nonprofit groups, et cetera, everybody knows this is a problem, which is a good thing. That means we can start to implement a solution. So, there is a desire and a hunger for education surrounding digital safety to try to eliminate some of these issues. Between 2016 and 2020, which I know is five years old, but the stats for suicide rates more recently haven't been put together yet. So, this is one of the more recent statistics. But we had the tenth highest suicide rate among youth fifteen to twenty-four and the eleventh highest among adolescents age ten to fourteen. I believe that that correlates, obviously, 2020 was COVID. But this is twenty fifteen-ish is when we started to see a real explosion in technology growth and kids having relationships with people that were solely on the internet. U.S. suicide was the second-leading cause of death in both age groups during this period. And kids are four times higher odds, have four times higher odds for suicidal ideation when they're experiencing cyberbullying. And I think, from a parental perspective, it's hard to understand the impact of cyberbullying, because we weren't cyberbullied, we were bullied in person, right? And so, you could handle a physical bully in a couple of different ways and most of the time it was effective, right? Cyberbullying is a completely different beast. And I was guilty of saying, well, cyberbullying, just turn your computer off, right? Like, don't be on the internet with these people and they won't bully you. But easier said than done, because now so many of what children do, they're required to be on the internet for. And so, cyberbullying is incredibly difficult to, for these kids to get away from. And it's not as easy to handle a cyberbully as it is to handle a physical bully or somebody in person. And then this statistic, seventy-nine percent of young people come across online scams monthly. I have seen a sharp increase in that as well. My job is more related to the sexual exploitation of children, but the financial exploitation of kids is increasing too. I think about things like, you know, what Disney princess are you? Click here and answer these questions, right? Kids get these pop-ups and they can take these quizzes to find out, like, am I Belle? Am I Ariel? Which one am I? And what those are doing is they're collecting whatever responses kids give to find out what princess they are. Those responses are being collected, harvested for data. IP addresses are being harvested, physical locations, et cetera. And the things that scammers can do with just that information is absolutely incredible. So, kids are at risk for that as well. So, these are some of my most recent arrests. And I don't put these up here to, I mean, I kind of put it up there for shock and awe and some what entertainment purposes. But these guys all have one thing in common, and that's that their victims were almost solely in a relationship with them on the internet and the parents had no access to their children's devices. Okay, so what we're seeing is offenders who do a really good job of being able to keep this under wraps with kids. They do a very good job of grooming and getting children to keep this a secret. And parents are sitting in the same position as all of us, confused about technology in general and not really sure how to monitor what their kids do on the internet. I had a discussion over the break where I was talking about how calculators that kids take to school now have internet access, some of them, and they can chat with each other and send messages via a calculator. So, parents just don't know where to look. And every single one of these gentlemen, they're sitting in prison right now and their crime was solely internet-based. And like I said, they're all Kansas offenders. These are very recent cases of mine. Two cases that I want to highlight that kind of, that are good examples of what I'm talking about. I recently, the second gentleman on the top to the right in the red, he raped and sex-trafficked a twelve-year-old girl from Washburn Roll Middle School. And their entire communication, their entire conversation occurred via her USD 437 email over her school computer. Now, that's not an accusation of, you know, impropriety by the school for not doing their part or for not, the problem is, is kids know how to get around these firewalls and these content filters. So, they met on a social media app. She said, hey, I don't want to get caught by my parents. Let's email instead. Email me at this email. So, she felt comfortable enough to say, hey, it's more dangerous to do this on my personal device than it is to do it on my school device. So, let's communicate via email. They set up times and places to meet and eventually he went to, came to Topeka, snatched her up, took her back to Gardner, Kansas, and kept her there for about a week. And obviously, we were able to intervene. But the problem was that there was a threefold issue. The school didn't know that this was going on, right? They didn't know that the communication was happening over a school device. The parents were not involved in checking devices. When I talked to mom, she said, well, I don't even know what to look for, right? Which is a red flag to me that we need to be educating parents too. And the suspect did a really good job of grooming the child and creating a situation where she didn't feel comfortable going to adults or law enforcement, okay? So, we have this threefold problem and it creates kind of the perfect storm for kids. We have parents who don't really know what they're looking for, teachers in schools who maybe aren't really aware that kids are able to do these kinds of things. And then we have offenders who know both of those things and take advantage of them. The second case study that I wanted to mention within the Spring Hill School District was a case where some of the senior boys created a Snapchat group where they would share nude photos of any of the girls that they got. Those photos were then saved to this group. And as they graduated and then juniors became seniors, those images were passed down to those new seniors. Those seniors collected more images, passed them down, and it became this giant compilation of non-consensual sharing of child sexual abuse material. That Snapchat group was originally created so that their graduation year could communicate with each other about school stuff. So, it was supposed to originally have been a school group that the school knew about and eventually it morphed into something else. Well, nobody was involved in monitoring it and so, the school never found out that this was occurring. And so, they were trading these images, sending them to each other during school hours on personal devices. So, my point in bringing that up is that our concern, obviously, school's big concern is, well, how do we harden school devices? But I want to encourage you guys to think about the fact that every single one of these devices, because of the internet and the way it works now, they're all connected and they're all intertwined. So, even though we're hardening school devices, if we're not doing something about the personal devices that are coming to school or even the personal devices that are at home, kids are going to be bringing the psychological, emotional issues that they're having over these incidents to school and it's creating a very toxic environment for them to learn in. So, kind of in conclusion, schools are where students spend a majority of their time. Whether we like it or not, as parents who send kids to school, you know, we're entrusting a lot of their development and their safety to the schools and to teachers and to staff. And so, without any type of intervention or education for both parents, teachers, students, and involving law enforcement, we're going to continue to see widening achievement gaps and issues at school. Simple issues like not achieving the academic excellence that we expect all the way through the potential for suicide, which we've had a couple of those in Johnson County over the last few years, all related to cyberbullying and internet issues. And so, kind of in conclusion, Katie and I, this initiative is important to us, because we believe in the value of education and we think that education is where the investment needs to be made on the front end in an effort to prevent these cases. Because I can tell you that I don't have the resources to attack this myself as a law enforcement officer. So, Katie, did you want to add anything?
Kevin and I, when we first started this initiative, we started a podcast called Screen Guardians. And in our first episode, we talk about this digital epidemic that we're in. And Kevin shared some of the statistics of the number of cases that he is working on, on a daily basis, monthly basis. He said, at one time, he's working on twenty-five to thirty cases at a time with a backlog of three hundred. That's one man. So, it's crazy. So, that's part of this, is we believe education is the greatest form of protection. And if we can get on the front end of this to help educate students, teachers, parents, then maybe we can prevent one crime against a child from happening. So, that's our recommendations from here are to educate teachers, students, and parents on the impact of excessive screen use, but also for the health and wellness and safety. Identify potential harms and mitigation strategies for device use. Use tools to assess screen use, so how much screen use is happening, how much personal device use is happening in schools and how that impacts their health and safety. We want to empower teachers and parents and students with knowledge for staying safe online using a proactive approach with tips and tools to optimize health and safety. We want to strengthen and increase the sense of community and support around technology use. And critically evaluate technology use, needs, and benefits for best practices, especially with the implementation and use of AI. On that sheet I gave you and that chart, it talks about the rise in crimes. Generative AI has increased significantly, meaning the abuse material that's created with generative AI in children. So, that is a huge risk. Solutions, again, is education is the greatest form of protection. Content filters can only go so far. We have to adopt and implement education programs and tools that work. The rising number of devices and crimes against children is undeniable. So, programs that bring health and safety to the forefront of tech news. Screen Guardians is a program that we have created. It's a K through twelve program, talking about the impact of screen and on safety risk and developed by healthcare and law enforcement experts to proactively address this issue. Here's our references. So, at this time, we'll take questions.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
Yeah, we do have a couple. Beryl?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Longhoffer and Mr. Cronister. Very disturbing information, but yet it is the reality in which we exist at this time. Early in your portion, Mr. Cronister, the thought came to my mind, the African proverb, it takes a village to raise a child. And I think that this is an important time for the village to come together, because I noticed there are levels of responsibility. The first is the parent, though. The parent purchases those devices. The parent can turn them off if they see things that are concerning to them. And I think it's important that you are communicating to the parents their role in ensuring their own child's safety. When it comes to teacher and classroom usage, I believe teachers can control the level of use for these electronic assistance to their instructions. So, you know, that may be an area in which I think you're working toward heightening awareness for teachers to make the right choices. But the schools can prevent access to it. I know you mentioned that all these horrible situations, if they involve school-related devices, they're one hundred percent preventable.
Yes.
And if that is the case, then there are things that I think we can share with our districts on what can and should definitely be done if we're looking at statistics like the one you shared. But I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. My question is, can parents be held responsible if their child is the perpetrator in cyberbullying if it results in the person who's being bullied committing suicide?
So, that's a very good question. Right now, the answer to that question is no. However, I have been very vocal about that. And in my opinion, a parent should be held accountable for what their children are doing on the internet, to a certain extent, right? If what they're doing is negligent. Okay, so, some of my cases, even the ones that have ended in a child's suicide, the parents have vocalized to me that they don't even know the passcode to their child's device. So, I seized a device from a child. I asked mom. I said, hey, what's the passcode? Because the device belongs to mom, so she can give me consent to search the phone. She says, oh, I don't know it. We believe in giving our children privacy. And I was really shocked by that, because in my house, privacy means you get to go to the bathroom with the door closed, right? Not that you get your own device and I don't get access to it. And so, in those instances, I do believe that parents should be held accountable somehow. I don't know what the answer is. I don't know how you hold them accountable for that, right? But the reality is, is that, yes, parents are the frontline defender when it comes to these kinds of things. Parents are providing the devices. The devices belong to the parents, so they, in my opinion, absolutely should be held accountable. Now, if they're doing everything they can and their child still finds a way, there's, we have to be reasonable, right, about holding people accountable for this? But if there is negligence in how they are reviewing and keeping up with what their kids are doing on the internet, I do think that something needs to be done. I think that's the first step in forcing parents to be like, oh, this is a big deal and I do need to figure out how to stop this. So, I guess, short answer, no right now. I hope so in the future, and I'm pretty vocal about that. Did that answer your question? Great. Thank you.
Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This made me very sad. First of all, Jesus said, if you harm a child, it's one of the worst things that can happen. And Katie, you got my attention when you talked about the physiological, emotional burden that this causes on children. Children shouldn't be burdened with what is happening through digital. And I would just challenge the board, how can we look at this as taking something away that would actually improve the classroom environment? So, the teachers, you gave your testimony of your sister and have a medical background too. So, I understand what happens to children that are burdened with things that are too traumatic for their maturity level. And no wonder they're chronically absent. They're depressed. They're dealt with things that children shouldn't have to look at, have to deal with, be taxed emotionally and all the physiological, you know, cascading events that happen. Suicide being the end. It's terrible when you think about it. What we're allowing to come into, I mean, we can't control private things, but we can certainly do something in the classroom. And that's what I would challenge the board to look at. The one-to-one devices. That, I think that's something that we now see the end of, we didn't know ten years ago. So, let's put this on fast track. That's what I look at, this whole issue, so.
Thank you. A quick comment. We, on our podcast, we interviewed a principal- Thank you. A quick comment. We, on our podcast, we interviewed a principal of a school who implemented a self-owned free school and a social media ban in order to re-enroll in this private school. And the result of that was significant. But I we also interviewed one of the students who had social media for one year of being in school, and then the ban went into place. And she in the interview, she shared, she didn't realize how burdened she was with social media and proving her life is better than her friends. And she's now in college and her first year of college. And some of the students in college told her, you're so lucky, you're you're free. Because she hasn't had the burden of the pressure of social media and knowing what everybody else is doing if she's not there or proving her life is better than others. So it's, we're not harming them by allowing them, but we are, right? And so it's protecting them and it's more important. Again, being proactive versus reactive to it. So.
Debbie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think I have a CDL license and you have to do that training. And I think that's the first thing that got my mind working on this. And one of the things, as I've gotten onto this board, I've wondered, one of the very basic laws that we have are truancy laws. And I was, I went to one of the KISA training things and I was really surprised to hear the superintendents talking about students that leave their district and they don't know where they went. And I'm I'm all for parents' rights and privacy and stuff like this, but we do have a legal responsibility to know where all the children are, in my mind. And I feel like we could do something a little bit better as as a state with our truancy laws, at least just knowing where, as a homeschool parent, I signed my kids up to homeschool, so you knew where my kids were in the state of Kansas. So I've I've kind of want, I would like to have the conversation on that. For for you all, I would want to encourage you to look at the seven May twenty twenty five Unsafe School Choice Option letter from the US Department of Education because some of the examples you gave were students, what they were experiencing, the district. According to that letter, if they're receiving those federal funds, are required to give them a different school. And I'm not a lawyer, these back there. Anyway, but also the our Kansas persistently dangerous school is something that we did have a program on. And they're, they met this month, I guess, a committee. And so I would ask if our chair or Dr. Watson might follow up and maybe get Dr. Burt Moore in contact with you guys so that you can make sure that you have some input with that definition to help whatever year you have insights to. And finally, and you'll know this one, we have a website, it's for suicide prevention, that I have been concerned about because when a parent brought it to my attention called the Trevor Project, it has a safe screen that tick, 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 and it goes off. And so the parents, it's a protection that I could be on this website, click my screen, it's going to go away, and my parents wouldn't know that I was on that website. I don't feel the school should have website. We should not be directing children to websites that protect the parents from seeing the content. I just don't think that that's right. And I know you agree with me.
Yes.
So that was everything. I didn't really have a question. I just wanted to give a bunch of feedback.
Melanie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for your presentation. Thank you for sharing the deck so that we could see the links. That was really helpful. And just the recency of some of the statistics that you're sharing, I think is incredibly important. I am currently a parent of a child in public school. For the last eight years, I have been living this kind of battle with the one-to-one devices. And I just, I'm gonna use this as a jumping off point to kind of once again bring up, I am asking again, and have been since twenty twenty one, for the Department of Education to bring forward some recommendations for school districts on what is age-appropriate use of these devices in a learning environment? Should K through three, K through six have access to an iPad every day? Should they be learning to read on that iPad? Is that appropriate? Because you did a great job of tying this back to, not only are all of these heinous, horrible things potential for our children, but it's also impacting learning. It's impacting that day-to-day experience in the classroom. When you're constantly distracted, it's really hard to meet those achievement goals that we hear so often about when you're not focusing on the work. So thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. One more. Connie.
Thank you for coming. My question has to deal with students or kids that get online and can order drugs to take at home without parents being aware, since we had a case in Leavenworth County. But is there a task force that works in that area or not? Or are you guys in charge of that area also?
So both and we we any any crime that involves a child that takes place on the internet, I will be involved in. But we also have a drug task force that is also going to be involved. So if I get a tip about something like that, they'll be notified and we'll kind of work together. And and I think what you're talking about is there was a a large rise in students using Snapchat to buy and sell drugs, and then they would pick them up at school or in the school parking lot. And then children are also using, and this is a topic for a different day, but the dark web, which is not, it's it's the internet that you can't access from your normal web browser. You have to use a special browser and have special settings, et cetera. But kids are smarter than us and they've figured this out. And so they're doing a good job of hiding those things by using Snapchat, which deletes all your messages after you send them. And then stuff like the dark web where they can get on and they can order this stuff and use cryptocurrency to pay for it. And the parents never see any of it. It doesn't show up on their internet. It doesn't show up on their bills. It doesn't show. And so, yes, there is a, there is an issue with that, and we have a task force that is tackling that problem. Thank you.
This is why it's hard not to go to that doomsday part when Jake was up here earlier and you're just like, holy smokes. But we have to focus on what we can focus on and do what we can do. And education, as you said, is our field. Thank you. I'm truly appreciative for the connection that we've made so we could start having more, well, we're just going to keep having these conversations because we have to have and find a way to do more. And I know you're presenting in some other arenas with districts available to you, so I'm really glad to hear that. I know that our districts educators, staff, they want to do better and they want to protect kids. So yes, everything we can do from this level and from everything you can do to just work together because that is that is what has to happen. So thank you. Thank you for your time. Thanks for driving in.
Thank you, guys. This is a wonderful platform for us to be able to share the information. So thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Dr. Nugent. Do you mind if we flip?
I don't mind one bit.
We're doing a lot of flipping today, so we're just going to keep up with that because we have some folks here for the presentation that Attorney Scott Gordon is going, is Scott in the room too?
Yeah.
Okay, that is going to give us. And so we're going to go ahead and move to that real quick and we'll have Dr. Nugent come back after that. Yes, sir. Yes, we're going to go ahead and do that. I think you've got the people in place that you need that were coming. We just want to keep them waiting any longer if we could avoid that. And do you want to hand those out? And if everybody remembers, this is about USD three, three, four, Southern Cloud and a disorganization coming before us.
So in addition to the slides, or actually, I just printed out for you, all of the slides I'm about to use, as well as the actual resolution from the school district that we'll talk about here in just a minute. Am I able to also pull up my PowerPoint while you have this? Thank you. What's that? Sure. Well, good morning, all. While he's pulling this up for me, I wanted to read from, just to give you an example of what it sounds like when you try to read a legal description of territory. Beginning at the intersection of the Neosha River with the midsection line of Section nineteen, Territory twenty South, R fourteen E, thence follow the center line of said river southerly to the point where it intersects the east line of Section twenty six, twenty fourteen, thence north to the northeast corner of something else. This is the beginning of the paragraph that completely changed my route and my legal career, and I did not go into property law after one particular class in property. These are mind-numbingly painful for most people to read, and that's not different for most of the attorneys. But this is an example, whenever we make reference to legal descriptions, that's the kind of description we're talking about. And that's going to make sense here shortly as to why I started off with that. The reason why we are here is that USD three, thirty five, three, three, thirty four, part, thank you, two days ago, passed a resolution for the second time to disorganize themselves as a school district and specifically attach the territory of their school district to five neighboring districts. You will recall that I mentioned, I think that was in January of this year, I explained to you, there were four different methods to disorganize a school district, and I'm just going to very quickly summarize them. The first one is a petition by election, in which it is called for by the the voters that they have asked for disorganization. The second method is if the school board petitions to disorganize, and it is merely that, it is a we don't know how to divide up the territory, we don't know how to divide up the property, we're going to completely defer to the State Board of Education to make those decisions for us. The third option is for a school board to petition to disorganize and attach to a single district. You saw that not too long ago with Healy, where it was a one hundred percent change, right? They wanted a hundred percent of their territory to go to a particular district, and that's what you all had approved not too long ago. The fourth method is when the school board petitions to disorganize and attach to multiple districts. This is provided for in that particular statute. It does include a request to attach the district territory to two or more specific school districts. Procedurally under the statute, the process should be that the school board passes that resolution. They send that resolution to you for your approval. What you are looking to approve at point is whether or not, and I'll just tell you, this is kind of the the standard I've used whenever I review these, not so much whether or not you agree with how they want to split up the territory, but is there sufficient notice to inform the voters of this is exactly what's going to happen? Does this comply with the the law? Really, that's really the only level of discretion that that we try to impose. So the request has to be first received by the State Board. Once the State Board approves it, then it is the election is conducted by the county election officer. If it wins, the election officer informs all of the parties, including the districts that will receive territory. Then all receiving school districts have up to thirty days to approve the suggested attachment. And if the receiving districts approve, the State Board issues the order. It's very much a movement of local control, right? There's three levels of oversight there. You have the local school district that makes the decision initially to detach and split it up. Then you have the voters that are providing oversight because they're the ones that have to say yes or no. And then you have the receiving school districts or the receiving school boards to decide whether or not they agree with that specific plan. So there is three levels of oversight there, if you will, involved. The current issue before you is USD three, thirty four. Due to decreased enrollment, the school board has determined that they needed to disorganize and they needed to figure out what would be best for their students. And so they considered all of those options and they decided that option four, that I shared with you, that was their best option. I would tell you that that school district has been working with the neighboring districts for at least a year. I know that they met with myself and Frank and other staff members to decide, okay, how exactly do we do this? And I don't mind telling you at that time, they might tell you I threatened them. I would say I strongly encourage them to work this out amongst themselves, because if I had to be the hearing officer to decide how to divide up the territory, I could almost guarantee some people were not going to be happy. Because again, I can't read these and I hate them. Okay, so they have worked out the following plan, that effective July first, assuming that everything goes as as planned, USD three, thirty four would be disorganized and divided up, and I'll give you that description here in a moment. You have, and this is why I printed it up, this is going to get a little confusing as to you're going to have the map and you're going to have the legal descriptions. Here's the process. I can I can tell you why it's so last minute. In the general guidance that we provide to the school districts, we tell them that they need to provide us with updated legal descriptions, both before and after the proposed change. So that there's no question as to when landowner A wants to know exactly what school district they would be assigned to, there's no ambiguity there. There there should be no ambiguity. So they know exactly what it is they're voting on. The issue can comes up of, well, who pays for that? It's not cheap. This is just as a side note to let you all make you aware. Our records, when it comes to the official legal descriptions of school district boundaries, aren't great. In fact, I would go so far as to say they're bad. Things happen. I don't have an explanation for you. Many school districts don't even have their own legal descriptions. They have maps. But they don't have this. And so it is very expensive to have someone come out and do it. And not very many people in the state of Kansas are actually certified and trained to do that kind of a work. So there had been some delays there in in getting this done. Because of that, that did cause some, one of a time crunch, and that's why it's come to you somewhat last minute. The way that they have disorganized and divided the territory up, fortunately, they are relying on roads that currently exist. What you have in front of you is if you imagine everything there, that is the current school district. Now, USD two, thirty seven, for example, the green that you see showing up there, that does not represent the entirety of USD two, thirty seven. That only represents the part of three, thirty four that will be added to two, thirty seven. Okay? Two, I can, I have terrible numbers today. I'm having a bad day. If only I could just, you know, have ChatGPT come and answer this for me and talk slowly, then I might be able to get it right. And I probably wouldn't use a British accent. So anyway, they are using specific lines or specific roads. I will tell you that when I received the petition with the actual legal descriptions and this map, I sat down with the state's computer system. It's accessible through the KSD website. I got into the conference room by myself with the biggest screen I could find and tried to recreate this map using the legal description or using the descriptions that are provided. Fortunately, I was able to do that. Because I was able to do that, I felt secure enough to bring it to you to say, this is going to be sufficient to provide to the voters for them to make that decision of whether or not they agree. So that is why it is coming to you at all, because candidly, if I wasn't going to be able to recreate this, I would have a really hard time giving you a recommendation that I'm going to give you. So there's the map and you have that printed there in front of you. If you want to follow along and try to do this yourself, good luck. The description is provided that Southern Cloud County, they did adopt that resolution. It was updated specifically to include the legal or the, I keep saying legal descriptions. The the, just the descriptions that you're going to see in a minute. The resolution does describe the rationale behind it, and it describes how some of the boundaries are changing. USD two, thirty seven, and I should say that several of the superintendents are either sitting in the back of the room or they may be on Zoom. Do we have anybody on Zoom? We've got, two people are on Zoom as well. And I will tell you that I told each of them, if I do this right, you won't have any questions for them. I've also told them to be ready to answer a bunch of questions. So as you can see in the map, the district will receive all of USD three, thirty four's territory east of Ninetieth Road. And at any moment, they're going to throw things at me and say, that's not what we agreed to. There is the description of how USD two, twenty four will, and I'm not going to go bit by bit through all of these. They're they're in front of you. The voters will have a chance to see this. This will all be on the ballot. But there's the descriptions. And it shows how two, twenty four will be extended. Two, thirty nine will also be extended. Concordia, again, extend the boundary south all the way down. Concordia, again, extend the boundary south all the way down to Highway twenty-four, they're going to take all of that territory, they're just going to go straight down. And then North Ottawa will extend north up to Highway twenty-four, except there is a carve-out that I have paraphrased on this slide, but the actual resolution describes exactly which boundaries will change. So here's what is being asked of you today. Unfortunately, and I will tell you the reason why this is happening now and not in October, the original plan, by the way, was that you would receive this this month, and then I was going to ask you to vote on it in October, that's your standard practice. In speaking with the election officer, she pointed out to me, no, no, we have something called early voting, which is going to start the day before the next time the State Board meets. So, in all candor, in order for them to change those ballots to be accurate, the vote, if you're going to vote, probably needs to happen sooner rather than later, and that's why we're asking you to suspend your policy of voting on action items. And for that, it is unfortunate, I apologize, but we are trying to make sure that, end of the day, I don't want anyone to have a complaint come February that at some point we skipped a part of the law, that screws the whole thing up. That's why this is in front of you in this manner. We are asking you to vote to approve the resolution of the proposed disorganization and attachment, and then direct us to send the resolution to Cloud County's clerk to update the ballot language. My understanding in speaking with her yesterday is that they will update the language, one way or the other. If you all vote to not approve this, then they will take it off the ballot. If you do vote to approve it, then they will change the ballot language so that then those legal descriptions will be included on the ballot. Again, in the sense of transparency, viewing this as if a voter, if a landowner in that school district walks into the polling place, and they see the ballot, and that's the first time they see anything about this, they probably need to know what it is they're voting on. At least there needs to be some action to clarify that, that's why there's going to be a change in the ballot. So that's what you have before you after today, here's what's, here's what's next, there's a bunch of ifs. So if you do vote to approve it today, then the community gets to vote on it in November. Ballots have already been written, but I've been told that those can be updated. And again, it isn't all or nothing. If you don't like, well, I don't really like that all five districts get something, that's not up to your discretion at this point. You're just approving it as it's written. Okay? Then it goes to the voters, and the voters, it's the same exact thing, it's a yes or no. If the majority of the voters approve it, then the receiving districts have up to thirty days to indicate approval of the proposal. My understanding is, all of them approve of this, they all want you to do this, again, they've all been working on it for at least a year, my understanding is they're all on the same page, and they're hoping you say yes. And if all of them approve, then we will write up an order for you to sign, issuing the order disorganizing the district and attaching the territory, again, as requested, no discretion at that point. If, at any point, any of these three things doesn't happen, no disorganization, you just go back to square one. Unless and until USD three thirty-four takes some other action, and they may consider one of the other options. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to attempt to answer any questions you may have, or if you want someone else to address the State Board.
And do we have somebody representing all of the school districts present in one way or the other?
I believe so, I could count, sorry.
Do we have everybody?
They say yes.
Okay, so we know we have represented, and I did have a phone call from a board member from three thirty-four Southern Cloud, so per his words, they were definitely all in on this, so, Michelle?
That was my, Madam Chair, that was my question, is just thinking of boundaries and how those maps have been, were set up years and years and years ago, how does that work with a local, like if you live in, if you have a local board, you're elected and they represented you, how, and now you're, you're kind of shifting people all across four different, five different districts, how does that, that board just dissolves, or how do, they just pick up with whoever's the closest that represents that area? I just, I guess I just needed a clear understanding of how that works.
So upon an order of disorganizing a school district, you are also dissolving the school board, to where if you were an elected official on, as of June thirtieth or thirty-first, come July first, you're no longer an elected official. Your seat does not exist. Now, the receiving school district may or may not need to reorganize their boundaries or their districts, and they may or may not need to reorganize their voting method, but that's a, that's a separate process that each, each school district would have to take up.
Okay, thank you.
There we go, I finally have light. Madam Chair, I would think that it would be in order to, to allow me to make the motion to suspend the rules and then go for, go forth.
Can I come back to you after some more questions? And we'll do that, or do you want to go ahead and start that process, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, just, just to suspend the rules, not to propose anything other than we, to see if we're going to suspend the rules or not.
I really want to get through any comments pre that, if you don't mind, and I will let you do it though, okay? Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Almost like Michelle, only instead of school boards, I'm just wondering, are there any bonds at play, and how are they going to be passed out to, you know, the other districts, are they going to be absorbing debt that didn't really belong to them originally, and...
I would have to go back and read the resolution, but generically speaking, unless it specifies otherwise, if you, let's say you're a landowner in the school district to be disorganized, if there is outstanding bond debt, my understanding is there isn't any, by the way. If...
Frank got up and said that.
Okay. It stays with the, like if you're paying taxes towards that, you would still be paying tax on that, that would not be absorbed by the receiving districts.
Right, right. And I will, I think, Madam Chair, I don't know if, and you're, just for a learning process, I don't know if we have to suspend the rules as much as have to have a seven vote, just for an option, I don't care whichever way you want to do it.
We suspend rules. My question, sir, is with the actual school buildings, where do they, how does that happen within this? Because what we're talking about is boundaries to receive students.
Right.
Correct, but if the, if the district's disorganized, then who owns the buildings?
Okay, I have to go back and read exactly what's in the resolution, but I believe the, and I, if you like, I can just have Larry come up and answer that. Usually if the building is within the territory that's being sent, then the building would also go.
Okay.
Yeah, the ownership would then go on to the receiving school district.
So in the process of all of this, that all has to, that's all taken into, okay, just, it was just kind of this filtering out here. Okay.
And again, anytime I get a part of this wrong, feel free to jump up here.
Yeah, Frank can stand back up and be his man.
Right.
Okay.
They are for sale except for the...
I need you to come to the mic, yeah. I know, but you have to, I apologize. Well, I don't apologize, we need you on the mic. And you are.
Art Baker, USC two-two-four, Clifton Clive, superintendent, high school principal. They made me come up because I was the youngest. All of the buildings are currently for sale except for a storage unit that we wanted to become part of our district if this passes.
Okay, and so for sale means who gets the dollars, whatever district that has been put in?
Well, they're currently for sale, stop me if I'm wrong here, I don't know why you guys put me on the spot. They're currently for sale and then as three-three-four property. And so because they're still organized, they will be the ones receiving that property. If they're still for sale on July first of twenty-six, then that contract is done and they become our property, then we can put them back up for sale.
Okay, perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Betty?
Scott, would you go back to the slide of... Thank you.
How far back do you want me to go?
Right there.
Okay.
No, that isn't it.
Go.
Is it?
We don't have a...
Actions, yes, okay. Madam Chair, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the, suspend the policy allowing us to vote on this item this month.
Okay. Jim seconds, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? We have a ten-zero vote. Okay, so the next vote will be, if anybody wants to make the motion to approve the resolution proposed disorganization and attachment. Do we need to say all of the...
I, I had given you a proposed resolution as, just a thought. And I don't know if that was, I did not include that in the packet, I just added it to you all, sorry. So I don't know how many of you have.
So you're talking about the top of that thing you gave me?
You want me to come look at it real quick?
Yes, please. I just want to make sure I say the right words, I can do it if that's... Oh, she's making... Oh. Hello, okay.
I forgot where I put it in there too, I just...
Is it okay if I do it? Yes, I got it? That is true, it is, I do represent that territory. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the resolution of USD three-three-four and the proposal to disorganize and attach as described, as we have been described therein. Danny seconds, any discussion? Nope, all in favor? Ten-zero.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm glad this has worked out so well with each other.
So, and the pillar is a really good way in which, you know, we can't see half of you, you can't see those.
I know, they do that on purpose.
No, we know that, but, and so appreciate those that are, that are online. Having, so knowing all of you, and having spent a good part of my career in this area, what just happened for three thirty-four, has it been hard, Larry?
Was that a hat, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this has been difficult, just emotional, when you dissolve a school district. When you attach it to five others, this is not an easy process, so I just want to applaud all of you. This is, this has been a lot of hard work, a lot of moving parts, and it's not over yet, but this, I know that everyone here deeply appreciates the hard work that you've put in so far.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're very glad it's coming out to a resolution that you've been able to come to. And we're still sorry to see it happen, but at the same time, we understand circumstances are what they are. So thank you all for representing your districts here today, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. We're going to take just a five-minute break real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Take one.
We're going to take just a five-minute break real quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
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 It has been quite an interesting pattern today. Dr. Renee Nugent, our new deputy commissioner of her learning services, thank you for being here. She's going to give us the practical aspects of starting the school year from the administrator's perspective. And if you looked at the slides, which she promises she will not speak every word on them, but part of this has to do with, we're going to be diving into regulations and different things and looking at, and we really just want to get a clear picture of what our districts are going through every year as they start up a new school year and all the things, so we can find places to simplify any of that. We definitely want to do that. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
It is my pleasure to speak on this topic. I'm not even a year removed, but as I was going through the topic itself, it made me And then, just today, just listening to the previous presentation, it's funny, too, how little things happen that have to make us all flexible in our work and in how we think. And so I think this message today will kind of show that. I use this metaphor of the iceberg, because a lot of times when you think of a superintendent, you might say, what in the world do they actually do? And you see very little of what they do, because that's only the public-facing side. But we know an iceberg goes much deeper, and that's what I think you'll see today. And a lot of what I'm showing you today, I can promise, is not the reason people chose to go into education, okay? But yet, it takes up a huge portion of our time and energy, and I want you to think about that as we go through. So, when I talk about May, the minute you get through graduation, that is the one time I think a superintendent can, after that is hitched off, hopefully without any issues, you can take a little bit of a deep breath and reflect on the year. But that's a very short-lived timeframe. Because even in our world, at the very end of May, this last summer, 1,000 administrators and their teams headed to USA Kansas for those retreats, and you're immediately starting the intensive planning for the following school year, which of course happens all year, but the minute one school year ends, you're diving into the next. In terms of requirements, and if you'll see the code, LS refers to legislative statute, then we've got state regulation, which is more what you control as on the board side, and then federal regs, of course. And you'll see a lot of what happens is a federal requirement, and I want to talk through that a little bit. So, obviously, in May, you're posting all your open enrollment seats on your website. That's new to us in the last year and a half. The big discipline data collection, which is a federal requirement, happens in May. It's usually due in June. That takes a lot of time and effort, just collecting that discipline data. You're really looking towards suspensions and expulsions, and that's in-school and out-of-school suspensions and expulsions and arrests that have happened all year, specific to special ed and general ed populations. And then, of course, the Every Child Can Read Act data is also reported at this time. But what you probably don't see in May and June also is you're getting set up for summer school. Usually, summer school, which is extended school year for special ed, general ed, summer school, and credit recovery usually happens the month of June exclusively. And so there's a pretty small window to make sure that's organized and staffed. A lot of students will participate in credit recovery all of June, and you're still involving transportation and food service very heavily at that time, so you're relying on a lot of federal programs to make that work. With summer school, becomes onboarding and hiring of staff for summer school, but also for summer maintenance, also for technology projects. We've had to really rework tech. It used to be something you did all of May, June, and July, but with summer school, people need that technology in the summer now, so tech projects are often year-round. And then we start in on negotiations, training and scheduling negotiations happens a lot during the summer, and that's really managing a lot of schedules, a lot of time, and a lot of capacity. We're also, at this time, reviewing yearly contracts, such as with mental health agencies and providers. If you have to contract out for athletics, athletic trainers, ambulance services, et cetera. And then, this is also the big time of year when health insurance premiums come out and you have to decide your options. That is not easy, also requires usually a lot of committee work with your negotiations team. And then handbooks seem like a little thing, but as you know, as you deal with policy now every month at your board meetings, and then the plethora of handbook, staff, students, classified staff, certified staff, 504, special ed, transportation handbooks, you name it, it adds up, those months. When July 4th hits, we know summer is over as an administrator. That is it. It's over. That's your last, that's your Christmas holiday, Christmas in July. And so that's when things really happen. And you'll see a lot of federal and local legislative statutes begin happening here. We have to request our August federal funds, state foundation aid. The big ones are number four, you really have to work with your county clerk on the estimated property taxes to be levied, estimated mill rate for the new year. Everything you do is budget, budget, budget. But number five, the LCP report, is huge. It takes hours and weeks to do that report. And so one thing I want to emphasize is, when I came to the state agency, and a lot of what's required that I'm talking about, we have assigned one or two people to that at the agency, right? So they become experts in that. We got to hear today from someone who is a true expert when it comes to computer science, right? That's his passion. And we have a lot of that in this agency. The school districts in charge of this don't have that capacity. So in a small district, maybe a superintendent and a board clerk are working on an LCP. At a larger district, you might have a team of people. But regardless, their sole job in life is not the LCP report. Yes?
I, at least I, need to get a better understanding of what is a local consolidated plan.
Yes, so a local consolidated plan is a, it's a federal requirement where you're uploading a lot of data around special ed students, their needs. It's a very data-rich report that you're providing to the feds. Stop with that. And it just requires a lot of data collection, attendance, a lot of different things. Also, in July, you're starting to establish your Board of Education meeting dates, locations. You're organizing your board. That's when you elect your new president, vice president, et cetera. And you start designating who does what for the year in your building. This is when you start to look, believe it or not, at your inclement weather policies. You adopt depositories for funds, waiver of requirements for accounting principles, all these, all these little guidelines, but you have to make sure they're on point during July. And it just goes on and on in July. Calendars are adopted at the latest in July. And then beyond that, there are other things going on besides reporting. Finalizing plans for professional development, new staff onboarding. In most districts, that's the last week in July, you're getting new staff in your district. You're overseeing all the summer maintenance policies, budget, 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 crisis plans, security plans, making contacts with families about, here's when enrollment starts, here's where your school will be, your child will go to school. If you applied for a transfer, were you accepted or rejected? All of that plays out. We're pairing mentors with mentees, welcoming staff and students and families back, and then again, meeting with our board members regularly. August, we have a lot of things around IDEA, Title IV. We're requesting our federal funds, state foundation aid, Title VI, annual review for Kansas Ed Directory. And again, it goes on and on, career and tech ed pathways, inter-local budgets. August is when things get crazy with the RNR, so that's a relatively new, in the last four years, statute. So you are having hearings over your revenue-neutral rate. And just being on an outsider now, you know, I'm watching our county have revenue-neutral rate hearings, our city have revenue-neutral rate hearings, the districts within our county have those hearings, and it almost gets to be very cutthroat of, this entity's only raising the mill levy by this much, this by this much, and you're really having to have hard conversations, and necessary ones, but all during that month while you're navigating the required reports. And then, on top of all that happening, your staff is coming back, you're planning for a convocation, professional development, open houses, you're reviewing your budgets, your students are coming back. You need to be present at things like jamborees, and first volleyball games, and first music concerts. You're making sure your website is updated, and you're starting those communication mechanisms with families, hopefully weekly or monthly. We have the same with September. Just again, all the budget hearings are happening, you're doing official motions to adopt the budget, you're posting your needs assessment, which has been happening all year long, and it comes to fruition at that time. Also, we then begin our kids' collection data, and I visit with a board member today who went to that training. And so you're taking time to go to the training to learn about how to collect the data, which is very intensive, and your school funding really relies on that data being accurate. You're submitting your fall vacancy report, expenditures for ESSA. It goes on and on and on. When I talk about federal fiscal file reviews, randomly you're chosen to pull like 10 files of special ed students or gifted students, and you have to do a file review or a file audit to make sure you're meeting compliance on all of those indicators. And so that takes teams of people and an immense amount of time. So if you're in a certain cohort where that file fiscal review is happening that year, that is just another layer of time and intensive reporting. That can be special education or gifted. A lot of your data for special ed is due and data entry. And when I talk about indicator seven, indicator 11, indicator 10, those are all special education indicators that require specific data collection. And on top of all those things, you are also setting expectations for parent-teacher conferences, starting to have your district leadership teams meet regularly, because you have KISA, peer mentoring and review coming up. Hopefully, you're finalizing negotiations. That's if you're lucky, and you're getting those agreements approved and signed and posted. Then you start attending other meetings, such as Greenbush, Link's Grant, curriculum leaders, because remember, in small schools, sometimes your superintendent is your curriculum leader. And if you don't go to both, you're missing something. And then you're also thinking about, who would be my best Horizon Award winner, or my best new teacher of the year, in getting those things going. October is kind of when you're fully into the first nine weeks of school, but you have the September 20th count, means it's finalized in October, and so your kids' collection, you've submitted your mill levy and budget documents to the clerk, categorical aid stuff is due. And then the big one, remember, that's a big compliance issue with KISA, is your dropout graduation summary report is due. And you, as a superintendent, you are tracking down every student that flags in that report, and it is very time-intensive. Again, requesting federal funds, your LCP carryover expenditures, targeted improvement plan, the TIP application grant is for things in special education, like, let's say you do have a student who's hearing impaired, and they may need some specialized services, you would apply for some of those funds through the TIP grant. And then your federal fiscal file review data collection, if you're in that cohort, happens. Some of these are just things that have to happen annually, so it's not necessarily during these months, but often you try to get them out of the way the first nine weeks of school. You've got professional development council trainings that are required, mentor-teacher trainings, bully training, sexual harassment training, suicide prevention and awareness training, homeless entitlement training, ESI training, bloodborne pathogens, negotiations, abuse, bus safety, structured literacy and dyslexia, cardiac emergency and response. And then throughout the year, you've got ESI, which you have worked, I know immensely on that, over the past couple of years. Kids' collection, indicator seven, indicator eight, which is a lot of parent surveys, and then there's more, right? Because we do need to be present at things like Rotary, community service organizations. We need to be volunteering in the community, serving on community boards. We ask our community to give to our schools, and we have to pay back to that. I think it's an expectation that you visit your schools and your classrooms as often as possible, be involved in any kind of education advocacy, such as showing up to state school board meetings, et cetera, and then building that constant board communication and rapport. You have to be there on a Friday night, or on a Tuesday night, or at a play. You need to stay on top of laws and regulations and what's happening across the street. Recruiting and retention is year-round. It's not just March through May anymore. It's year-round. So with that, you need to attend or have some say in career fairs, staying current on social media. And then, of course, all of the HR matters eventually land on your desk, no matter what size of a district you are. So sometimes that's being involved in investigations, onboarding, hiring, and interviewing. And then, I just thought about this week, you know, it's September, and if you look through that September list, and then you live in Tuscaloosa, Kansas, where a major flood just happened, and you're charged with making sure all of this stuff happens, and then we're in a process of really focusing on school improvement. And with school improvement comes things like accountability through compliance, but what compliance really matters? It's all important. But in terms of saying a school or a district might be conditionally accredited because of a compliance matter that really might have been a little out of your control because a flood just happened, and you didn't get the report submitted on time. So I think there's so much to consider as you, the board, are looking at your strategic plan, and specifically the goal that addresses this. And then I know Jay and I will be in front of you sometime talking about compliance and how that relates, and I think we have to be very mindful and maybe put the brakes on that a little bit, and think about, what of these compliance areas directly impact school improvement when we're talking accreditation? And is there another mechanism, when we look at compliance, that we can, that we can communicate more effectively with schools? So, I'm open for questions, but just remember, there's a lot under that iceberg that people have no idea that is happening.
Very real. Any comments? Are we equally blown away? I know I and Dennis both sat through a kids', counting kids workshop. I just, I just wanted to have an understanding of, what does it even mean? And, you know, it's, it was truly mind-blowing. I mean, I was just sat there with my mouth open, I was just like, wow. And all of that's related to their funding, right? So it's all of that. And then I know every district is audited, because obviously, that's KSDE's role, in trying to make sure everything's accurate before it goes to the legislature. So, there's just so much.
And so, just think about counting kids. If you have turnover in staff, or the requirements have changed, and you're taking staff members out of every building who have a hand in counting kids, that then disrupts the building for that day, right? You're less one secretary, one clerk, one principal, someone in charge. If you're a new superintendent, you're not going to miss a counting kids workshop. So you add anything new to any of these? Some of these reports are only due once a year, and so...
I just, I just wanted to have an understanding of what does it even mean? And you know, it's, it was, it was truly mind blowing. I mean, I was just sat there with my mouth open. I was just like, wow. And all of that's related to their funding, right? So it's all of that. And then I know every district is audited because obviously that's KSD's role in trying to make sure everything's accurate before it goes to the legislature. So there's just so much.
And so just think about counting kids. If you have turnover in staff or the requirements have changed and you're taking staff members out of every building who have a hand in counting kids, that then disrupts the building for that day, right? You're, you're less one secretary, one clerk, one principal, someone in charge. If, if you're a new superintendent, you're not going to miss a counting kids workshop. So you add anything new to any of these? Some of these reports are only due once a year. And so you forget how they work. And so now you're going to, to retrain on that. And you're, invariably you're going to make a mistake and you're going to miss a deadline.
Right.
It's going to happen.
Connie?
Connie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask you the question. Why is school starting so early? If you could explain that, maybe I'd have a better understanding.
Sure. I don't know that I can answer that for every district, but past experiences are. You have a group of people that set the calendar or propose a calendar for your district. Usually that is a committee of teachers, often members of the negotiations team, and then other stakeholders. I know in our community, we invited private schools to that meeting, our local college, so we could try to get our calendars as aligned as possible. But there's a lot of variables to that, Connie. So for example, if you start later, here's just something that you often have to think about, then your semester, your first semester might end after Christmas break. So at the high school level, with kids taking dual credit or concurrent classes or they're in the middle of a lesson and they have to have a two-week break, often districts want to end first semester prior to Christmas and start second semester after the holiday break. So that does, and you also want to have some, as much equality in the number of days first semester and second semester as possible. So that sometimes dictates how early or late you start. And then often staff want to get out prior to Memorial Day. And so if you want out at the, by the last week in May, you often have to start earlier. But it also depends on the district, how many days they require, how many days of professional development they have in their negotiations agreement, how many workdays are required in their agreement prior to the start of school. So it's, it's very locally controlled as to when school starts.
Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Renee. Yeah, I, I was at the kids' training there in Abilene and I, I got there late and they were in the middle of a slideshow that I was like, where, where, where is this? What is all this stuff about, you know? And then Laurel, who was presenting, she put up a picture of a one-room school with 30 students in it, all, you know, in front of the building with one teacher from 1903 or something like that. And I thought, man, this has really changed. And then we get this poster yesterday from, yesterday with, you know, with the whole century of changes. And so I just, you know, to be able to multitask must be a, I mean, that must be a real gift for someone that wants to be a superintendent.
I think flexibility is, is more than multitasking and, and just appreciating every time you have some dedicated time to do this work. But you know, no matter what role you're in, teacher, secretary, superintendent, principal, something is always thrown at you. And so you have to be able to catch the orange or egg that's being thrown in your face while continuing to focus on these deadlines as well.
Would, would you, I'm just, your impression, a, a person who likes that kind of work, you have to like people because you have to, you get pulled in so many directions. Am I illustrating that?
No, that's absolutely correct. Yeah. But really, if you're not in the business of liking kids and people, then education probably isn't your path anyway. So you start out with liking the littler people and you have to learn how to like the bigger people.
Yeah. You know, I, and this is kind of a funny illustration, but at Christmas time, our family gets together and we usually put a jigsaw puzzle together. And if you're sitting there all by yourself trying to do it, it's just momentous. And then you, half a dozen people gather around and start finding pieces. You know, to me that works.
Dennis, that brings up a really good point. So I, I got a phone call earlier in the year from a superintendent at a small district that says, hey, I just went to this training KSD provides, it was great training. But I want you to tell them to stop saying, we're not putting anything new on your plate. Because although the data is stuff that you've collected for other reports, this is one new report that you're putting on our plate. So I think as you talk about taking, you know, looking at your policies and then when you often think about, do we want to make this a requirement? I would just, I would just advocate that you really think about, this is something more we're putting on a plate where there is an overfilled plate.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Well, we are in the home stretch, but don't pack up yet. I believe, if I am tracking correctly, we are to, well, it is actually the chair report. I just have a couple of things. You, what are you doing? I say don't pack up and he gets out of his chair. I was a little concerned. Wanted to give this date, so please put it on your calendar. If there's any way you can come to Topeka, it's Tuesday, January 20th at the Capitol. It is going to be literacy day. So I hope to be very much a part as they, Cindy Lane with the blueprint, they're the ones that, apparently you have to be July 1 at midnight, like on your computer to reserve a date at the Capitol for anything. So they had to grab a date and so they're going to be building out what that will look like. So we hope, we, we will have a hand in that in some ways. But if there's any way that we can really be there and, you know, just be a part of that, we'd really great. So I just wanted to get you that date as soon ahead of time as possible. In your packet, if you would please grab this, it's a two-pager. It's got the whole map thing with our faces on it. This is, next month, we're going to be, it's like Ag Month and we're going to be doing some stuff around farm-to-plate and just the whole nutrition program. So we'll be having some different things. But these are, this was Kelly Chaney's brainchild and I thought it was beautiful. These are schools by district that are doing some kind of an innovative farm-to-plate type situation with their lunch program. So if there's any way you can get to one of them before the next meeting, I would just encourage you to reach out to the superintendent. I think the food service emails what's on here, but make sure you're including the superintendent in that as you say, hey, you know, is this a day that would work for me to come experience what's going on with your nutrition? I just, I thought it was a brilliant idea. So if you guys can find a day somewhere in there, that'd be really awesome. I, I'm going to have to do some traveling. No, I'm kidding. I got some close by. But anyways, wanted to point that out. I think that was my majors. So with that, hopefully I've kept it together. Beyond that, we have board travel requests. That is also in your packet. Does anybody have anything to add, delete, otherwise comment before we vote on the board travel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that, that Colorado conference, I, I intend to attend it and they are providing hotel and registration.
Right.
There would be no other expense to the board.
Right. And it's something you're doing on a personal level.
Yes.
In that whole conversation, and actually I'll just tell you later, never mind. Okay, so anything else before we vote? Okay. I'm like, what, what have I even been doing right now? Can I have a motion to approve board travel? Melanie? Second? Jim? All in favor? And Betty did have to step out, so that's a nine-zero vote. Okay. Future agenda request. I'll get my pen ready. Anybody? Yes, Debbie?
I actually have it written down. Okay, so we had discussed during the meeting to limit, to have a discussion to limit contract periods for the current board. Plus, I, I added in my thoughts was plus six months. That gives that, you know, that six-month kind of till the end of the contract, end of the school year. And the new board has a little chance to kind of get to know what's going on. Just have the conversation.
Right.
And then, let's see. And then I was, I meant to ask for it for this meeting and I forgot to get it to you. But I wanted to see if there was, if the department could give us an overview of all these various U.S. Department of Education letters that they've been sending out so that we can understand what this means both to our State Board of Education and our local boards of education. Because there's just been so many letters. And I think I know what they're saying and I think I know what they mean to us, but I don't necessarily know.
So the Dear Colleague letters?
Yeah, there's just a number of them. I don't think they're all called Dear Colleague.
That's true. I don't think that.
I don't think they are, but you know.
From the USDA, is what you're saying.
Yeah, just anything that kind of affects our board kind of thing. And then, of course, I know that we had the review of the Definition of Persistently Dangerous Schools Happening Committee. When it came back onto the agenda, I was just going to ask if it could come back on the agenda in a matter that allows the board to have input rather than, you know, maybe a motion already as an action item that the committee said, let's do this. And we didn't have a chance to have a conversation about it first. I was hoping we could do it that way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Michelle and then Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I think it would be great to go over this.
Isn't that crazy?
With, with new regulations and like, maybe get rid of two if you're going to add one.
Right, that has to be like a, you have to.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, and I'm just thinking about just over the years, like when I would log on and inside my child, our children up for school, the list gets longer as far as opting in, opting out. I mean, that list kept growing and growing. And I think it's, they have to offer it because it's either put in law or it's a federal law, so they have to, you have to check a box. And I just think, we just need to know, like, I mean, some of these things I'm thinking aren't even academically related. So it's like, what, what is going on in that part of the day where you would just pull your kid out of school for that day? Because you don't want your kid subjected to it. I'm thinking of things like, and I know people like to say it's, it's good for everybody, but like suicide prevention or bullying. There's certain things that, that, that's something that the parent would be handling on their own, on their own with their child. So it's not necessarily for all. And that person, that parent needs to have that right to know that that's what's going on in the school. And I think the schools have been very good about giving people time to, to, to up their child out of that. So this is a lot.
Yeah, I know. I'm really looking forward to sitting down and going through that because it looks crazy. Mr. Porter?
I just wanted to reinforce, so it's two things I talked about yesterday. I think that we need to have a discussion and make recommendations to the funding task force on both accountability issues and finance issues. And one other thing, we've had several, we've had several presentations on technology. And I'm not commenting in one way or the other because I'm, but what we have missed, we have had no, we've, we've heard other people say what teachers say. We have had no impact. And, and we need to do two things. First of all, we need to hear because in some cases, we're hearing, all they're doing is technology all day long. We don't know, we, we need to know that. And nobody's really said that, but that's sort of been implied. And then as we make recommendations, we need to make sure that there are numerous teachers at the table helping us make those recommendations.
Thank you. Okay. Any other requests or comments at this time? Because we are going to then have a motion to go into executive session if we are ready. Okay. Mr. Zek?
Does anybody need a break before?
Yes.
So start. Do you want to start at 12:30?
Yeah, well, just make it an even number, 12:30.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education. Sorry. Thank you. I move Kansas State Board of Education recess into executive session to discuss the subject of non-elected personnel matters, which is justified pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma in order to protect the privacy interest of the individual to be discussed. The session will begin at 12:30 for 10 minutes. No actual will be taken during this open, this session. And open meetings will resume at the board at 12:40.
Okay.
PM.
And do I have a second? Jim? All in favor? They're nine-zero. And so quick break and back at 12:30.
And then I'd like to invite.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'd like to invite Dr. Watson and our lawyer, Mark Ferguson.
Thank you. We need that part.
Sorry.